City Manager, Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Mike Baker, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. Skip Henderson, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Tanny Washington, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your City Council.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the December 12th Meeting of the Columbus City Council. This is our last business meeting of the year, so let me go ahead and say Merry Christmas, and Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year. We'll be seeing you after the new year again, of course, but we hope you have a wonderful, warm, and safe holiday season. We have a ton of business today. We've got a good crowd here, so we're going to get down to it and let you be heard. But we want to get started, as we always do, with a little inspiration. And we're very fortunate today to have Pastor Chuck Griffith with Trinity Assembly of God Church. And we want to call you forward to the podium to present us with the invocation consistent with your faith tradition. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Let us pray. Father, we pause now at the beginning of this very important meeting to look to you. We thank you, Lord, for these leaders that are among us, the mayor, the council persons. Lord, we thank you that they are ministers in the civic arena, and you've called us to lift them up in prayer, and so we do that. We pray for those in authority over us. We pray, Father, for you to give them direction and counsel and wisdom as they make decisions today. And, Father, we ask, Lord, that they'd find strength and guidance. We thank you for them. For, Lord, their duties and responsibilities are great, and as they do those, we know that we will in return, as citizens of this city, live quiet, peaceful, prosperous lives, and, Lord, that's what they want for us. So we pray. We pray your blessing upon them, your help for them. We pray for our city, Lord. We thank you for the surrounding area and the influence that Columbus has, and, Lord, we pray that you can continue to bless this city. And, Lord, may we, in this time of year, pause to remember that, as good as our efforts are, as much as we want to make our city, our region, better, that there's no greater help than what you provide. For this season, we're reminded that the best of heaven came to earth. Run to us, a child is born, a son is given, the government shall be upon his shoulders. Wonderful Counselor, mighty God, and the Prince of Peace. Today, we look to you, and as the weight of the city government is upon the shoulders of these leaders, we ask that you would help them, and they would sense that your shoulders are broader than theirs, and that the weight of the government can be shared with you. Lord, that they would know that there's a mighty God who will help us in every situation that does bring the best of heaven to earth. A wonderful Counselor who will give direction, and one who ultimately will and can bring us peace. We ask in his name, amen.
Amen. Pastor Griffith, thank you so very much for that. You know, as an elected official, I know I can say for everyone up here, we have such a great faith-based community in Columbus, and there's nothing more inspiring and fortifying than when members of the faith community come up and say they're praying for us. So thank you for that, and to all that are listening that do likewise. We also have a special group of visitors this morning from Diamond Elementary School, so we want to call them forward here to stand in front of the desk. And Tiaja is going to have a microphone for you, so if you all will come up. And as they assemble, if you all would stand and prepare for them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the majesty of America and to the republic for which it stands, with the nation and the God invisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all. All right, don't go anywhere. We want you to say your name and how old you are.
My name is Tripp Daniel. I'm from Diamond Elementary, and I'm nine years old.
My name is Shannity Daniel, and I'm nine years old.
My name is Cambry Pipkin, and I'm nine years old.
My name is Devine Singleton, and I'm like 10 years old.
My name is Sawyer Elliott, and I'm seven years old.
I'm Akala, and I'm six years old.
My name is Kayla, and I'm seven years old.
Wonderful. And we have the Assistant Principal here. Pat, introduce yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Pat Woodall. I'm the Assistant Principal from Diamond, and we really appreciate you inviting us here today. Thank you very much.
You bet. And who's with you?
Hi, and I'm Jacob Elliott, and I'm the Magnet Coordinator at Diamond Magnet Academy.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much, and we've got some parents and some helpers and supporters. If you all would stand up too and let us recognize you. Well, again, thank you for coming and helping us get things started this morning. We hope you'll come back again soon and help us out, and thank you to all the teachers and parents for raising our next generation of leaders. Appreciate what you all do. All right, we'll go ahead and jump into the agenda. We've got some folks that moved things around this morning so they could be here bright and early, and we certainly appreciate that. You all may recall about, oh, gosh, 11 months ago now, after the beginning of this year in January, I appointed a commission to look at our existing government building to see if we needed to make some changes. As you all know, it was built in 1971. We're having an awful lot of system issues with it, system failures, spending a whole lot of money to repair some things in a building that, as I said, is having multiple system failures and otherwise has some things that would not pass code today. So we called upon a pretty large group of about 30 of our community citizens to come forward, those who use the building regularly, those who watch others use it regularly, like the judges and the clerks of the court, who tend to, the jurors that come down to do their civic duty on a daily basis, certainly the sheriff's office and many, many others who tend to the citizens who come down to use the government center. And we also called upon some citizens to come forward and other stakeholders that would have a particular interest. We have been so fortunate to have good coverage from the media, so we want to thank you all, both the television media and the print media that are here today. The report is going to be presented to council. We have a couple of people who are going to come up and say a few words, but I do want to let you all know that are watching on TV or live streaming our meeting today, that it has just been uploaded to the CCG website. So if you'd like to see the report, it's there on the homepage of the website, and also the very voluminous appendix, which contains all of the meetings, agenda, the minutes, and also the various reports. And it's all topped off with the introductory letter from me to the city councilors. And so with that, we will go ahead, and I will welcome first Judge Gil McBride, who is the Chief Judge of the Chattahoochee District. And Judge, thank you so very much for making yourself available this morning.
Thank you. And thank you, council members, for having us here today. Would it be appropriate to ask the commission members to stand?
Oh, absolutely. And they are going to be formally recognized at the end, too. So, yes, if you're with the commission, please stand. All right, and those who helped, and there's a few folks who are ex officio, so let's give them a round of applause, folks. And as I said, don't go away because you're going to be formally recognized. At the end of the presentation, we've got a little something for you. So thank you, Judge.
All right, I would like to thank the mayor for bringing this issue to the forefront, certainly the mayor pro tem for her service on the commission, the city manager for the leadership that he has brought to this process as well. I'm told that I have two minutes, so I will talk in a hurry. And if I go a little bit over, please indulge me, because it's kind of hard for a lawyer to say "good morning" in two minutes, as you know. I will tell you also, I would like to thank Judges Richardson and Senior Judge Falwell for their service on the commission. Judge Richardson, of course, is one of our two state court judges. Judge Falwell is a senior judge. He also is the only member of our commission who worked in the old courthouse as well as the new courthouse. So he brought a very unique perspective to our work. We drew heavily from that perspective. We also talked with the original architect of the building, Ed Neal, about what was done, why it was done, why certain choices were made, why other choices were rejected, and the original team that built the current courthouse went a certain direction. I say that to let you know that this was an exhaustive process. It was one of the most thorough processes, of which I have personally been a part. And early on, it focused on three options that you will hear about today. You'll hear about why those options were focused upon, but I would like to emphasize a couple of commonalities that run across those three options. And one is that all three involve the center of the Chattahoochee Circuit, which covers six counties but is based in Columbus historically, remaining exactly on the block where it has been since at least about 1830. We were mindful of the fact that Columbus, Georgia, has the distinction of being a planned community. It is not, despite what we sometimes see with traffic, a haphazard community. It is planned, and much of the original city plan is still intact, with the churches downtown, the South Commons, the northern reaches around the city that were early on settled upon as a public burial ground, and, of course, the courthouse in the center downtown. And so this is respectful of the city's heritage, and it's also, we're mindful of the fact that whatever we do will be precedent when there are future challenges to that plan and to the integrity of the original city plan. So we were informed by that. I would also point out that none of the options are inexpensive. I will say also that all are as cheap probably as they ever will be, given the way building costs tend to inflate. And finally, I would add that all were really informed by a certain set of realities that are not always pleasant to face. But if you look in the report, there's no chapter that says "realities," but there is a thread and a current of reality that runs all the way through the report. And there are several factors that weighed very heavily in the decision that was ultimately recommended. The committee voted across the three options. One option was chosen. That is the committee's consensus position at this time. That was the methodology that we agreed on. But one of those realities is safety. I will tell you that there is simply no safe way to evacuate a jury from a single jury room in that building. And that's a reality that many of us would rather not talk about. It's not a comfortable reality, especially if you're serving on a jury. But all of the jury rooms are above, well above, in some instances, 100 feet above the highest piece of rescue equipment that the fire department has. There are also no fire escapes in the building. And finally, I would point out to you that there are no sprinkler systems anywhere north of the ground floor, which would include all of the courtrooms, the clerk's office, the municipal court, magistrate court, and all of the superior court space as well and state court space. So we are dealing with the reality that tragedies do happen. The building, although it is of concrete construction, it is riddled with wire that has been patched together over the years. All you have to do is look in the ceiling tiles, which we have occasion to see quite, we see behind them quite frequently because of the work that's done in the building on an ongoing basis. And the building is something that simply requires attention. And I will tell you that we appreciate your consideration. We know that our role is advisory. We are keenly aware of that, and we're respectful of the role that city council has to play. I would say that none of us really envy you, your role at this point, but we are all available to assist and to discuss with you privately, as well as in further meetings of this type, should there be questions, or should we be able to help you. So thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Well, thank you, Judge. And with that, we'll go ahead and jump into the meat of the report and some of the realities and findings, as Judge McBride alluded to. And we're going to ask John Hutchinson to speak about, who's the Director of our Building and Codes Department, to speak about some of the safety concerns in the building. John, good morning.
Good morning. Quickly, we did a part of this commission. We also did a space assessment. So we went through every department area that's in the government center complex with John judicial and judicial. We spoke to them to kind of get their concerns, their needs. You know, obviously, if we tell everyone they need more space, they're going to say they need more space. But ideally, what we did is tried to find out the critical things. We performed site visits. We met with every section, every part of anybody that was in the government center. We did a square footage. We projected that would be needed for the next five to seven years, and then we did a net square footage. So we weren't, and we used a multiplier generically for the circulation and mechanical needs, and that's what led to the architects having a base number basing off of kind of mass modeling of what we wanted to do. All right. The findings of the existing gross square footage of the government centers, 277,632 square feet. Projected just space needed for judicial growing to the amount of courtrooms that would be needed, it already would be 260,000, plus the additional of the 75,000 projected for nonjudicial, gives us a gross square footage needed in the next five to seven years to be about 335,504 square feet. One of the other things we dealt with is maintenance. Late, my, part of my old job in engineering was a lot of the project management on renovations and things we did in the government center. Luckily with Pat, we've worked diligently now to require an architect's seal to verify any new renovations, any changes. I know I had a fight with Judge Richardson, and we just wanted to add a door in his property, you know, in his area when he was a solicitor about where we were going to put that door, but we just wanted to verify that we weren't making a situation that was already kind of murky any worse. So these are the three main maintenance concerns we have. It's very difficult to access mechanical areas of the building, and I'll show those in pictures. A lack of redundancy. We had a plumbing issue on the second floor, and because we didn't have cutoffs on each floor, we literally had to drain the water out of the whole building just to work on one bathroom on the second floor. So a lot of times, you know, we have to specifically do those on the weekends, so if it would have happened on Monday, we would have had to, we waited till Friday till we could do something about it, because if we would have drained the water, then any floors would not have had access to water for use bathrooms, water fountains, things like that. And many mechanical systems just have reached the end of their usable life. Rest of this is just pictures. So on the sixth floor, that's a hatch in one of the, on one of the stairwells. And to the right there, that's one of the, that's ducts for water, heat, and air, all that, and you see that kind of two-by-three hatch there. That's our access. So a lot of times, if we're having issues to try to get to a certain floor, it is a concern. That is our old generator that is sitting down in the basement, but it has been encased in concrete. So therefore, if we ever needed to get it out, which we weren't able to, we had to use the backup generator, which is outside on First Avenue. And now it's just a relic, unfortunately. It's just sitting there. This is our boiler. So now we have the generator down in the ground floor, and then we have our boiler, which is original to the building, in the penthouse. This picture on the right is the hatch that takes you down to the elevator shaft. There's no physical stairway. There's no freight elevator. There's no way to get that large piece of equipment out of the penthouse. So luckily, we've been able to continue to maintain it, but physically, there's no way to get that boiler out without a crane. It would have to be, it would be something very expensive. One of the issues we have talked to you all about was about the hot water piping issues that we've dealt with in the building. To this date, we're actually on the sixth floor now. We would have touched every floor in the building to get that issue remedied. We took about 200 out. As you can see to the right, that's the new brass fittings and things like that that we've got with additional cutoffs, where I mentioned about redundancy. If we ever have any future problems, we'll be able to take care of some of those things. The code compliance side, like I said, the building was built in the '70s, and so a lot of the things that we would require now in a new building, with high-rise construction, is not there. So stairwells typically exit, you know, stairwells would never, in code, now, we would not allow them to be that close to each other and to be into the center of the building. So therefore, if you have an emergency, you're coming to the center of the building, but say if the emergency was right there at the elevator, then you've knocked out both of those stairwells possibly from being used, because that's where the emergency, or that's where the issue is. So we wouldn't design it that way now, but that's the reality we're dealing with right now. Also, ADA accessibility didn't come into effect until 91, so a lot of the things that we would like to do in these buildings, you go into the upper floors, they're grandfathered in, because they were predating the code, so we don't make it mandatory unless it's more than 50% of the cost of the renovation. But as you can see on the restrooms there, we don't have a five-foot turn radius, so therefore, anybody with handicap accessibility in a wheelchair, you wouldn't be able to use any of the restrooms above the ground floor. The ground floor does have ADA, but the rest of them do not. Sprinklers, which was mentioned before, we do have sprinklers on the ground floor, the basement, and the parking garage, and that's it. You may see some others that look like those, but those are just heat sensors. We have some in some of the upper floors, but they, literally, they're just heat sensors, so they don't suppress any fire. They just notify the alarm system that there is a fire. And smoke-proof enclosures, if you've ever been down those stairwells, you know how narrow they are, how tight they are. Typically, what you want to do is have somebody, you want to be able to preserve someone in place. So say if somebody does have a disability, they can't make it down six flights of stairs. Typically, now, in stairwells, you create extra space to allow those people to get to the side, and then they're protected in the stairwell. Another issue is, we don't have sweepers or any way to contain the smoke. I know Major Massey would talk about something along those lines, but we don't have a way to keep smoke from getting infiltrating into the stairwell, which is also another issue. So that's all of my presentation.
John, and also, we'd like to call Major Massey. We may have questions afterwards. I just wanted everybody to get up and get their presentation. And Major Massey, thank you so much for coming today and for your service on the commission.
Thank you for allowing me to serve. On the security side of it, I'm basically going to sum it up. I'm going to try to stick to my two minutes and sum it up that the original facility that was built, was built with just a few courtrooms in it, and it was designed as a multipurpose facility prior to 9/11 with no security concerns for that facility built in. It was designed to be an open, public building, and that's what we battle on a daily basis now. Currently, you can see the makeup of the building with two floors holding general-purpose government-type offices within them. The east and west wings are not shown in this, and the east wing currently is filled with juvenile court, and the west wing houses a couple of law enforcement entities and, as well as our sheriff sex offender registration. Human Resources is the only general government left over in that side. Exterior concerns at the building, on the east and west side of the building, you have parking right up against the building. Parking standoff is a great issue. Our entrances and exits are wore out. The pressure within the building oftentimes forces doors to stay open. We have people who constantly monitor that. The landscape and design around the building does not offer any protection for the building. We have a major natural gas main right up under the facility, which is a huge security concern for us. The sprinkler system has been talked about. I won't continue to go into that. Fire alarms, cameras, door alarms are all inadequate now, and that's mainly due to when the building was first constructed, it was designed to be an open floor plan. And the need for office space and those type things throughout that facility has closed a lot of that building off, and there are certain areas within the facility that you can't hear a fire alarm. It's built within our security plan to notify certain offices when the fire alarm goes Stairwells, we'll continue to talk about the stairwells. We do have courts throughout that building, as you see, and we have a lot of handicap people that come within that building. It is impossible for us to get someone in a wheelchair down those stairwells. Inmate cells are inadequate. If you've noticed, a lot of the trials that are occurring in the Superior Courts now have multi-defendants in them. We have to keep those defendants separated, and currently, we have two male cells and two female cells on the fourth floor. If we have four co-defendants like we had in a recent trial, we have three coming up in January for a trial, we basically have to sit on one of those in an office. We do not have adequate cell space anymore on the fourth floor. We have poor lighting throughout that facility, mainly in the parking garages. Any of you that's visited, you know about that situation. We have an elevator malfunction just about on a daily basis. It requires the fire department to come over and remove people from those elevators, as well as our inmate elevator. It was down for two days last week, and we had to move prisoners on the public elevators. Our checkpoint location does not offer the public very much on days like today when it's cold. Oftentimes, they're left standing outside. Parking for judges, elected officials, is very hard to secure that parking garage. There's many entrances to it. We have, that's a manpower issue that we deal with on a daily basis. But more of our concern is that we are not able to house our juries in a secure parking area. We have to escort those juries in and out of the buildings to try to prevent jury tampering in a lot of these trials. Most courthouses that I've visited have secure parking for their jurors. Inmate drop-off, we frequently bring 30, 40, to 60 prisoners over to that facility each day, and it's open on both ends. There is public access right there where we have to drop them off, so a lot of times, we have the public intermingling with those people that we're bringing over with the various charges that we bring them over on. That's a few of the issues. If you haven't had a chance to take the tour yet, I'm open. If you would give me a call, I would be more than happy to take any of you around and show you in person a lot of these issues.
Thank you, Major Massey. Hang around. I'm sure there will be some questions, and you all know, as obviously, I've limited everybody to two minutes. The report is 23 pages long, and it itemizes some of these things. And again, I encourage you to go through, and then if one of them catches your interest, there are, the appendix, which is over here in three volumes, is online as well, and you can go and actually see what it is. But let me just say that there is indisputably a finding here that there is, that this building is not conducive to safe emergency egress, period. And we see that when we have our planned fire drills. Certainly, people know how to evacuate. We do go through that, and led by Major Massey and others. But there are issues simply because those stairs are too narrow, they're too steep, they come to the center of the building, they let everyone out who's fleeing, let's say, from this hypothetical fire or smoke into what is a below-ground floor. Our ground floor is actually below ground level. So the more you know, the more concerned you'll be. I did want to say a few that we missed as we went along, just because of time's sake, but they're listed both in my letter, and of course, there's others in the report itself. But we have such things as, you know, criminal cases, child custody cases, divorce cases, drug court, juvenile mental health court. And the way this, these courtrooms are set out, and the hearing rooms are set out, because it's so outgrown its use, defendants are right next to the people that they're there for offending. There are people who are seeking temporary restraining orders, who are standing next to their abuser in the hallway. It's not unusual for deputies to have to break up people, families who are in fights about things related to child custody, because as much as they try to keep people apart, it's just two cramped quarters, and that's just not a good way to proceed. There is only one elevator for prisoner transport, as Major Massey said, and there are times when, due to time constraints and other things, that judges ride the elevator with prisoners. And that's not a good situation. He's already mentioned the holding cells. We have no fire sprinkler suppression system, except on that first floor, as he mentioned. And we did have a representative from the fire department. For the sake of time, we're not going to have them speak separately, but again, do take a look at that concerning part of the report. And one of the concerns that was not mentioned related to systems failures and inefficiencies in John's report was that our glass is uninsulated, the glass wrapping of the building. And so what happens, and I think everybody here at council knows, but maybe some of the citizens aren't aware, even this week, one side of the building remains at about 53 to 56 degrees, so we're running space to fifty-six degrees, so we're running space heaters in every single office on that side, while the other office is running at about eighty degrees. The other side of the building is running at about eighty degrees, so they have their, their blinds closed, their doors wide open, even if they're courts that are supposed to be secured, fans going, and, and so the inefficiencies are, are just tremendous. And I think that about does it, we are spending approximately a million dollars to repair a pipe system right now, just so we can continue to use this building, and that pipe system is only one of many system failures that we're having to deal with, and so I think at some point, we need to make the decision of how is the money being best spent, but in no way, shape, or form does this current building meet present-day building codes or safety codes, it's only because it's grandfathered in that it's being allowed to be inhabited in any way whatsoever. So with that, I will, thank you, Major Massey, do stick around, there may well be additional questions, and I'm going to call forward David Helmick, who was a member representing the Columbus Bar Association, that of course is a frequent user of, of the building, and he's going to speak to us a little bit about the public outreach that the commission did.
Thank you, Mayor Tomlinson, thank you, council, for hearing us and having us this morning. The commission did survey the public as part of its work, created a fairly lengthy survey, got a, a good bit of responses, and, and thousands, literally, comments from citizens about the government center, about their thoughts. Touch on the hot points very briefly before getting into the specifics, what we heard, what we saw from the comments and the responses was a feeling, first of all, about the way security is handled, there's an appreciation for the way that, that the sheriff's office handles the security and, and the checkpoints, given the limited, given the limitations that they have with the current building as it's formed right now, some, many, many complaints about the, the entryway, which has been kind of moved to, to a loading dock area, is what some citizens called it, and a real bemoaning of the departure of open spaces as the, the government center was originally created, and a move to the way that, that, that security in the building has to be run now, due to the security reasons. And there was overall really a feeling that, that something must be done, and that just doing nothing really and truly is not an option. We did, in our survey, get a total of one thousand five hundred seventy-six responses, we got a wide age range from our citizens and the survey takers, and these are some of the specific highlights, not going to go through the entire survey, it would take probably about an hour, but it is available, I believe, in the appendix, Mayor. So, you see, when citizen survey takers are asked, how satisfied are you with parking, for instance, we have on the right side of, of the screen, over fifty percent indicating a level of dissatisfaction, for instance, with the parking, those saying they were somewhat satisfied or very satisfied come out to just a little over a quarter of the survey takers. When asked about the facilities, just in general, elevator stairwells, restrooms, and so forth, we have a, a very similar response of about fifty, fifty-one percent indicating dissatisfaction with the facilities, and approximately thirty-two percent saying they are satisfied with the facilities and the government center as they stand. Now, just kind of a softball question, just a general question, how satisfied are you with the government center? We had about forty-two percent saying that they were somewhat or very dissatisfied, little less indicating a level of satisfaction, with about fifteen percent indicating neutral to no opinion. We also asked the survey takers, the citizens, is the government center an important icon or symbol of Columbus, Georgia, with forty-nine percent indicating yes, that it is, and when we read the comments, we found some, some interesting comments, interesting viewpoints, with citizens indicating, yes, it is an icon, an important icon, but perhaps for more negative reasons. We saw the word "I saw" popping up many times in the comments, people indicating it was an icon because simply it's Columbus's most obvious landmark. And then you see one comment down there at the bottom of the screen saying, yes, but it's a bad icon, and one that hurts us. That's one thing we saw several times, was citizens saying, for, for an icon, for a symbol of the city, for a, a place that, that visitors to the city look to, that this was just really a negative-type building, and not a good face of our city. And finally, just closing down, we did ask the citizens, should Columbus have a judicial complex that is separate from its government and city services, and we had about fifty percent, I think more than fifty percent indicating, yes, we should have a separate judicial complex, which was really noteworthy to me, because it came without or before any real outreach or education on why, in our case, that would be very helpful to people like Major Massey and the sheriff's office, and, and why it might just be far better for a security standpoint and other reasons. But unless there are any questions, certainly yield the floor at this point, Mayor Tomlinson.
I want to mention too, David, first of all, thank you, and, and everyone, the comments, all of them, the fifteen hundred and plus from the first survey, and then the other survey that was done later, do you have slides from the second survey?
I don't have those, those slides as, as part of the presentation this morning.
Okay, do you recall them? Because I think we need to, let me see if I can find those quickly, just kind of talk about them, but as, as maybe Eric can find those slide results from the, the next two surveys that were done about the options, let me just say, we did have four different public forums, where people filled out comment cards, those also are in the appendix, and we gave two tours that were open to the public, and we recorded them by video, and then played them on CCG for a couple of weeks. So, so those were, that was some additional outreach, and then, of course, if we had, if we had, you know, people email us because they read an article in the paper, or posted something on Facebook, we printed that out, and those are in the comments, too. So, we really had a, a ton of input, and, and so I'm looking now, and it does look like from page twenty-one and twenty-two are where we have additional surveys from the citizens. It looks like six hundred and fifty individuals took the survey of which of the three options they liked best, and then, of course, we have the survey that was done of the commission members. And so, maybe I'll hold on to what their result was until we have the next presenter, which is going to be two, actually, presenters, Michael Starr, Neil Clark, and David, thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, Michael and Neil, you want to come forward? I want to thank you all, these are two architect firms from the community who worked for free to help us. Thank you so much for volunteering your time. I'm not sure you knew what you were getting into when you volunteered, but I appreciate you both sticking with us, and it was a lot of time, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Neil Clark with Heck Burdishow Architects. I'm here today with Michael Starr with Two W R Architects. Our two firms were actually quite pleased to come together and serve our city and our mayor and the committee as a, as a resource as they went through this process. Our role really was to support John Hudgerson and the committee as raw data would, would come forward regarding building program and issues regarding what is needed in the future, we would take those and translate it into thoughts, ideas, sketches about different possibilities. It was a very open-ended process, we did not start or end with a preconceived notion, all options were on the table, whether the government center should remain at the government center site, or move to some alternate site, all was a possibility that was studied, and that is kind of exhaustively detailed in the report, if you want to read that, all the different scenarios that were originally looked at. In the end, we ended up with three scenarios on the government center site, the current site. You know, what all of our studying showed us was that the eighteen twenty-five master plan of Columbus that identified a, a courthouse on the current site was, was wise. There were reasons then that that was a good site, those reasons are still valid today. So I'm going to just take a few minutes and run through the first two scenarios, and then Michael Starr will come up and present the, the third scenario. The first scenario is the only scenario that, that keeps both wings and the tower intact. It does add, there, there is no scheme that does not have some addition to that building, and that's just because the program elements all add up to more than three hundred thousand square feet. The government center tower and wings has a total of about two hundred and seventy-six, so no matter what you do, you would have an addition to that, to that building. The pros of this is that you keep the iconic tower and wings pretty well intact, although it does get a complete renovation, and when we say complete, we mean the, the structure, the roof, the substructure stays, but all the systems are replaced, the skin of the building is replaced, the interior gets new walls and a new layout, it's a complete renovation, and that is what the numbers that you will see reflect in terms of, of budget. The pro, a main pro is that, is the lowest-cost scenario. Some of the cons are that this now keeps both judicial and government city offices in the same building, they would still be scattered around throughout the building, some departments may be on, on multiple floors, and you would still have the security issue, which is, when you come in, everybody would have to go through the most strict security because it is a judicial facility, even people coming just to city offices would have to go, go through that. Scenario two is also a renovation scheme, it preserves the tower, but demolishes the two wings, and in the place of the two wings, we build a separate new facility for government offices. You're seeing this from the corner of First Avenue and Tenth Street, kind of from the Rankin, looking at the site. The tower would be judicial, it would have an addition of two or three floors on both the north and the south sides, to get the square footage necessary for, for judicial. The way the, the tower was originally designed, all the courthouse functions are on the upper levels, that's where the highest floor-to-floor heights are that would accommodate the big courtrooms, and the lower floor-to-floor heights are on the lower floors. If we were designing that today, we would flip it, you know, we would put the, the highest occupancy, which is the courtrooms, the highest occupant loads on those lower levels, and this one, we would have to keep them on the upper levels where the high floor-to-floor is. So, the, the, the pros to this would be that we get to separate the government office from the judicial. You could now have a much lower-levels security going into the governmental office buildings, keep the higher-levels security going into the, the tower area. We handle parking on this by a new three-hundred-car underground parking that would be beneath the plaza that you see there. One of the, one of the pros is that this creates now a new public park that connects the two, the office building and the tower, with an underground deck below it. To, we, we have determined that we think seven hundred dedicated parking spaces is what's needed for this facility, we get three hundred in the underground deck, four hundred would be across Ninth Street on the existing parking lot, we would have to build a parking deck, a multi-story parking deck there to handle the four hundred spaces. Michael, would you come and present?
Neil, did you want to go through the cost before you, or do you want to do that after Michael speaks?
I did not know I was going through that.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, let me go through, yeah, I thought there was a slide, we did have a slide at, at one point, but for the first one, if you put the first one back up, John, the, the cost of taking it back to the studs, and, there you go, yeah, I knew we had the slide somewhere, thank you. So this was for scenario one, which shows a, a cost of, if we were to build it today, ninety-nine million, ninety-nine point nine million, and that includes the new parking deck, redoing the existing parking deck, a complete demolition, except, you know, back to the studs, as I said, and then, of course, if you add in anticipated inflation, that's about another ten million dollars for a total cost of one hundred and nine million dollars. Of course, that's, you know, all projected, but you can see there how they break it down to include the parking, the demolition, even landscaping, site preparation, that type of thing, for scenario one. And then scenario two, John, if you have that, and, and this is on page eighteen of the report, it shows a hundred and three point seven million for just the cost if it was built today. Again, that's, also includes a new four-hundred-space parking deck, and, and also a new parking deck underground for three hundred spaces, so a good twelve million dollars of that cost is included just with the additional parking. So, again, a hundred and three point seven million, if you add in inflation to by the time this could be approved and built, you're talking an estimated inflation cost of about ten million, so for a total of one hundred and fourteen million dollars for this scenario. So, Michael, did you want to come and talk about scenario three?
Good morning, Mayor and councilors. For scenario three, this is a complete demolition of the existing complex, both the tower and the wings, and first let me emphasize that this is only a massing and site layout concept, and is not a building design at this point, merely shows what an arrangement of buildings of the approximate scale we're talking about could look like on the site. So, we've got two distinct entrances to the buildings, both the office building and the judicial building. The judicial building is the taller, it's approximately twelve stories, that you can see there, and the office building there sits on the corner of First and Ninth Street. One of the things that you'll notice is it creates a lot of public green space, and we felt the idea of kind of contrasting with the existing facility that is very closed off, and you can't access the public space that was originally created, providing green space, both kind of a formal front yard, if you will, that you can see from the corner of Ninth and Second, perspective, looking to the northwest, and the backyard, which is in front of the Springer, is also a large green space that would connect all the way across the river center and to Broadway that could be used for public functions and so forth on the weekends. So, some of the, the, the highlights for this particular scheme, the, with the judicial building, it is sited further to the north than the original tower is, which would allow the tower to stay in place while the new judicial center is being constructed. The wings would have to be demolished, and, and all of the functions within the wings would then have to be temporarily relocated until the entire complex was rebuilt, but that is one of the pluses of this location. It's also set back from the street on Second Avenue, both for scale reasons and also security and protection reasons, because the courts are in the lowest kind of three-story plinth that's created there, that breaks the scale of the building down, and also does what Neil was talking about, if we were to design a new judicial complex these days, we would want the, the highest use and highest occupancy areas there on those lower floors, easy in-and-out and access, and we don't have issues with people being on tenth and twelfth stories, large numbers of people in an emergency situation, which obviously we have right now. Underground parking as well here in this large green space, that would all be a multi-level below-grade parking area that would be secured, so that could be staff, judges, et cetera. We'd also have an underground Sally Port with a separate We'd also have an underground Sally Port with a separate elevator and entrance that was secured underground for prisoners to, to be able to access. The judicial center, judges would have their own separate vertical access as well. So it would be a huge improvement in terms of security. And one of the things that's important as well is that we create these buildings with the proper presence and monumentality, given the, the functions that they contain. And I think this does that.
Thank you. Michael, John, do you want to put up the cost for option three? And again, this involves the demolition of the tower and the wings and the parking deck, the full renovation of the tower, the renovation of the wings, a new judicial building, a new building for the city offices, a new parking deck underground and above-ground site and landscaping for $112.8 million. If you then add in an assumption for inflation for by the time this could be approved and built, it's $124 million. So what we did was had, as I said before, four public forums and sent that out to the community. The media did a great job of also telling folks where they could find it online. And then we sent out a poll, which had the video, all three options, with all three cost scenarios that you're seeing here. And we asked people to click to, to make sure that they watched the video and to say whether or not they read the cost scenarios and so forth. And 93% of them said that they did. It might even be a little higher than that. My recollection is about 93% of them said that they did actually watch the video and look at the cost. And 65.4% voted for option three. 16.6% voted for option two. And 17.9% voted for option one. After that, we did have some additional information where we were able to assess the efficiencies of the current building. And the current building cost us about $700,000 a year in energy costs. And it was estimated based on industry, energy standards that with the newer renovated buildings, even with thousands of extras, of feet, square feet of extra space, we could save hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in energy savings, which I thought was, was interesting. When we sent the survey out to the committee, we had all but one committee member actually responded and voted. And 53.5% voted for scenario three, which is a new government building and judicial building. 35.7% voted for number two, which is a new government office building and full renovation of the judicial tower. So keeping the, the external structure of the judicial tower. And only 10%, 10.7% voted for just fully renovating the, the tower. So that was the scenario, the choice of the committee. Again, 14 of the committee voted for scenario three. Nine voted for scenario two and three voted for scenario one. And, and so they also noted though, and I want to point out that it's, it's also my recommendation, but the committee noted that the city has, through the years, received opportunities to either purchase or otherwise acquire existing office space. And, and certainly we look at those opportunities as, as they present themselves. And the committee, commission, was aware of that. And they recommended in pages 22 and 23 of the report that if acceptable existing office space becomes available, the quantity of which would allow the general government services to be moved into that existing office space, then of course you could cut the cost of construction or renovation by tens of millions of dollars. And so it's my recommendation to council that they pursue opportunities of existing office space into which CCG can move the general government functions of the city government and then provide for a new or completely renovated judicial center with additional square footage. Just a rough estimate of that cost would be more in line with the $99 million figure for a newly constructed judicial building and moving all the general government functions into existing office space. So you have a little bit more cost efficiency there. It's also the proposal of the commission and my recommendation to council that they consider funding this through a special local option sales tax, which would allow for the citizens to vote on whether they wish to spend their money in this particular way, given the circumstances. We currently have an ESPOST that will be rolling off in 2020. And that would present a timely opportunity. That was, quote unquote, the city's penny previously. Now it's the school board's. And we have a little, I guess, agreement that it alternates between the school board and the, and the city. And so this next time would be our opportunity to go for a SPOST in 2020. I'll note that the existing government center building was voted on by the citizens. They voted whether they should approve bonds to fund the construction. And so I think it's only appropriate that the citizens vote on whether they should have a sales tax that would fund this particular judicial center if we're able to find existing office space to move the general government functions into. That would keep our tax rate, our sales tax rate, at 8%, which it's been at for some period of time and our citizens are used to. And again, allows us the opportunity to take this to the citizens and for them to, to make the decision. So that is our report. I want to open it up for questions from council, if there's any. We were able to get this out to council Friday, once we got it back from the printers and, and were able to scan it and, and get a digital copy to them. And so they have had a bit of opportunity to look at it. But I'm sure they'll continue to look at it, as well as the appendix that we have. So while we have all these folks gathered, does anybody have any questions at this time? Counselor Woodson?
I just have a question. In the design of the, of the building that, even in the new construction building and the building that exists that would be modeled, remodeled, why didn't we try to add some of the surrounding facades? Like, we're surrounded by a lot of historical buildings. CSU has even done some to complement the historic district. I was wondering why the building looks so modern compared to its surrounding areas?
With the, the time that was available to us, we, we really didn't have time to design buildings. What, what you see there is really a placeholder. And that placeholder says that a, a reasonable approach may be to take, to begin to play off of the materials of the tower, the glass, the concrete, the white, black play of colors there and to introduce that into a new building on the same site. Certainly, as, as this goes forward and as architects have time to study that, other ideas like, like what you were saying, to, to maybe play off of some of the surroundings rather than the, the tower, that may be a possibility. So don't, on any of these, please, don't, don't get too hung up on what something looks like. Think of it as a volume. That's what we were trying to convey to the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's a great point, Counselor Woodson. It is just a concept. And I think, as Michael said, it's just a mass holder to show what a building of this size would look like. So, so the design has, has not been decided.
And I, and I mentioned that because I'm pretty sure that the uptown and the historic district, as they look at the presentation, unfortunately, perceptions becomes a reality. And I'm pretty sure that we would get phone calls saying, why aren't we being consistent? And that was my reason for the question, because I already predict the phone calls in, in that manner. So thank you very much for clarifying. And viewing audience and those from the historic district would see, okay, this is just preliminary. Something else will come, if possible, later. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we have Counselor Thomas. If you could turn on her microphone, please, Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. And I think Major Massey or Chief Shores may be able to answer the first one or two. You talked about the safety of the buildings. I'm wondering, one of the scenarios keeps the wings in place. Do we have the same kind of issues in the wings, excuse me, with clearing the buildings and those kinds of things? Are those, are those similar in the, in the wings?
Yes, ma'am. But the, the issues that we've talked about are throughout the entire facility.
And are the, are the wings, do the wings have sprinklers?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And Major Massey, if we move the non-judicial offices to another building, does that require security screening? Is that going to be a manpower issue for the sheriff's office?
What it does is it reduces the manpower issue. With modern technology and the entrances and exits being where we need them, we wouldn't need as many people on those that we could possibly put in other places that we, we need them as well. But no, it would, it would reduce the need for manpower that we currently utilize at, at that facility.
And Chief Shores, tell me what, it seems like I remember when I worked in the, was working in that building, that our ladder truck doesn't go up very high on that, on that current building. Tell me, tell me about that.
Right, some of that's because of the design of the land and the structure, simply because it's such a large building. There's what we refer to as a pushback, obviously, from the side of the building. So if you have a 100-foot ladder, you're really only going to get to about the fifth or sixth floor if we position properly. So, so you guys understand, from a firefighting perspective, if the building has an issue, it's, it's going to be a smoke control issue, okay? So a fire is not typically going to take down a building of that, of that magnitude. It's going to be the smoke that's going to do the most damage. So prompt evacuation is what's most important. So that's a stairwell operation for us. We simply would not be able to effectively fight a fire from the outside of that structure. So it's an inside operation.
Do those wings have outside, I know, I know the tower doesn't have any outside access.
Right. The stairwells are more remote in the wings. And again, I think the, the critical issue for the fire service is the fact that you do have large populations of what we would consider sometimes less ambulatory populations of high in the structure, you know, which is bad for us. So a lot of these folks would not be able to really get down the stairwell very well at all. A lot of them have trouble just getting from the parking lot through the elevator system. So, so that's the major concern for us, is the tower itself. The wing's a little bit better shape simply because there are lower structures and there's not as many people in them.
And then I have some questions. I, I don't know, Mayor, who, but the costs that have been given to us did not include any of the relocation costs. Is that?
Do y'all want to speak to that?
That's correct. These are, these are only building construction costs. They do not include soft costs such as relocation and FFNE and so forth.
And those other soft costs, like some of the design and the technology and furniture and those kinds of things can be 15%? 20%?
I'd, I'd say 15% is probably a pretty good number.
So as we're looking at our options, we need to be sure to keep those kinds of things in mind, too. And then I'm not going to hold you to this. I'm looking for a ballpark. If you were to get the okay today to go forth and do whichever one of these options is, what kind of timeline are we looking at? How long are we looking, what, you know, to, to, to have the grand opening?
From, from start to finish, from day one of design to completion of construction, about 36 months?
I was thinking three years.
About three years. 36 months from, and, and that's what we've, we've really got built in. That's when you, you look at, at 2020 to 2023. We've obviously projected costs to 2023. Mayor Tomlinson noted that the ESPOST rolls off in 2020. So you're looking at about three years from, from kickoff of design to completion of construction.
And I, okay, thank you. I, I certainly would hope that we would have some conversations with the, and I know that you will, with the school district about the ESPOST. They may not be ready to completely give that up, but.
Last time we actually had, when it was, quote, "our" turn to have the SPOST and they had a need, we put their need in with ours. Yeah. And so we have a good working relationship, certainly. And, and also, you know, we usually go out for a little bit more, believe it or not, than, than this would be. So we probably would, I'm sure this council will talk about the opportunities. Are there any other critical needs that are infrastructure needs that need to be on that list as well? Whether it's school district or us?
Having worked in that building, if money were no object, I would tell you, go down there this afternoon and start tearing that place down. You know, but money is an object. And we do have to make sure that we are looking at the right things and making those right choices. And I do want to thank the commission for your efforts. I know that it was a time-consuming effort for you and, and we appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. And there is, obviously, in the essence of time, we want to continue to move on. I will say that, that there is in the report some discussion of the fact that we could, obviously, if there's new building to be done, for instance, you can retain people in place while the new building's being done. There is a plan that would allow for that. If, of course, there was existing office space and the general government could move in, then you have all sorts of options of flexibility, how to stage this so the government continues to function. Let's see, Counselor Baker?
Thank you. Thank, I believe, Mr. Clark, you were talking about energy savings?
Yes.
But just, it looks like to me in the report, you've estimated about 50 cents a square foot.
Does that sound right?
Is that, is that based on a new structure or remodeling the old one? Or is about the same either way?
Well, whether you remodel or you build new, we're, we would be redoing all the systems in any event. So that number is good for either one.
Okay, and that would be based on the 280,000-square-foot existing, I guess?
It would be, yes.
And then you have, I was just trying to reach a, an idea of what, you know, to discount the construction costs based upon future energy savings. And I guess you could take that multiple and run it out, what, 20 years?
Yeah, it's a significant, you know, it's a significant number, particularly over time. I think the mayor did a great job of, of laying out what the challenges are in that existing tower and wings. And of course, when you go to new, new construction, today's systems, the latest technology, energies, efficiencies there, when you get into things like LED lighting, lower energy demand on that, you take all those savings, you multiply it over the lifetime of a building, it's a significant number.
Okay. And I guess my other question, maybe it was probably a finance question, but it was dealing with the special purpose tax. If it's a three-year construction timeline, it might be possible to run that on a pay-as-you-go rather than have to issue bonds and use a sales tax to pay back the bonds and incur interest and underwriting cost. I realize that's a finance question.
Finance is nodding behind you. They're nodding that you could do pay-as-you-go.
Okay, that was my question. Yeah, pay-as-you-go versus bond financing and using, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you. All right, we have Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm just going to be brief on the sake of time. I understand this is just an initial presentation and it's just a, a report this morning. And certainly I appreciate all the members, your time, efforts and contributions. It's greatly appreciated by, not only myself, but this body. Just a couple of comments, that's all I'm going to do. I mean, you can take it for whatever you want, you know, file it somewhere, whatever. But just on the face, from a face standpoint, I'm, I'm glad the mayor said that the one thing here that's really important is that the government center does belong to the taxpayers. And certainly they're the owners. And any decision, it would be right that the decision is placed in their hands. Second, I would think at some point you would really, being that what was just stated about the soft cost, other expenses and all, I would think that you would need to sharpen your pencil a little bit. to sharpen your pencil a little bit to get a more accurate reflection on exactly what we're talking about. I am a little concerned today, in today's building environment, where it's going with all the natural catastrophes and all. We are seeing anywhere from, you know, an increase of 25% in construction costs today, which is causing a lot of projects to come off the table. You just cannot absorb that kind of, absorb that kind of risk. I understand this is totally different. This is a different source of funding, but I would think that you would also, would have to look at it in the same manner. I do like the aspect of ESPOST where you can totally absorb all that and then deal with the operational side on an annual basis. I think that would probably be, you know, at this magnitude, the numbers we're talking about, the debt would really, really concern me and probably others as well. In respect to the cost, you know, I would, you know, I know this is just a report. I would hope that there would be more conversation about maybe other alternatives or other ways to go about it. I think the square footage can be handled in many, many ways. And certainly, I would, I would hope that at some point in time there would be a discussion on the possibility of going a different route, maybe lower to the ground, expanding out, not so high, possibly separating buildings as well. I think that there's a tremendous amount of cost efficiencies, not even on the operational side, but from a financing side, too. I think that that really needs to be explored because you could probably get a lot more for your buck, bang for your buck in doing that. And even, the cost may even come down considerably. I like the idea of having more with what we have. Of course, again, it would be the citizens' decision, more of a campus-type atmosphere where you could actually create efficiencies and coefficients, where you can, you know, place these facilities in the places where they function best. I think there's, you know, a, that needs to be explored. I know that, again, this is just a report, but I'm sure there'll be more conversation on alternatives. And then, lastly, Ms. City Manager for this body, I was just kind of intrigued by some of the things being said. Could you provide, could you provide the council with an actual cost of what it takes to operate those facilities over there? I know utilities was mentioned, but I would like to really see a breakdown of the actual cost, all the way across utilities, whether it's maintenance, whether it's third-party work involved, materials, you know, and maybe just a snapshot over the last three years of what it has really cost the city to operate those facilities. That's, that's just, I think, in the light of this conversation, that's something that's kind of caught my attention. And I'd appreciate that if you would, you would honor that request.
Yeah, we can certainly provide you with that information. I think when we provide it to you, I would keep in mind that the utility cost would be the actual cost. But when it comes to maintenance, it's been basically what we could afford. It's not, I mean, it'll be a real cost, but were we able to afford it, we would have spent much more on maintenance than what you'll see. But we'll have some footnotes to share all of that with you when we bring that information back to you.
Thank you. And lastly, whatever's done, okay? And this is just, again, my perspective. I don't think you want to do a 10-, 15-year fix on this. You know, renovations really, really concern me because you never can peg exactly what it's going to cost you. Usually it's going to cost you a lot more. New build, you can kind of determine, you know exactly what it is. But I think that whatever's done for the sake of this city, whether I'm here or not or any of these members are here or you guys, I think you got to look like 30, 40, 50 years out if you're going to be spending this kind of money. I think that that ought to be the mindset. So anyway, those are my comments. And again, we appreciate every one of you and thank you for this presentation. I think you all did a great job. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And that concludes the questions for this moment. As you can obviously see, this is going to continue to be something of discussion. I'm sure there'll be discussion in the community as the press talks about what's happened this morning and also as people go online to look at the report. I note in closing of the letter that leads off the report that we can and must do better. This is just a safety issue. This is not about aesthetics, although aesthetics are nice and we always want a civic building that citizens are proud of and we always want efficiency, so we're doing their business in a way that best returns value for them. But at this point, it really is about basic functionality and safety. And so I hope people will read it with that reverent eye. I, too, want to thank the commission and we're going to ask each of them, as I call out their names, to come forward. We have a special commemorative gift. You all have worked, as I said, for 11 months, but our meetings were two hours long. They involved these folks coming to the after-hours tours and forums and things of that nature. Many of them were on subcommittees, proofread things and so forth. We met most of the time twice a month. So you're talking 20-something meetings just for the commission itself. So this was a huge time commitment. We're so grateful for your time, expertise and input. And so let me go ahead and rattle off. We have, of course, the city manager, Isaiah Hughley, who served ex-officio, the mayor pro tem, Evelyn Pugh. And if you, again, as I call your name, if you're sitting in the audience, please come forward, at the very least, so we can see you and recognize you and also to save Eric a few steps. Sheriff Donna Tompkins was on the commission. Councilor Skip Henderson. Councilor Gary Allen. Councilor Walker Garrett. And obviously, we knew Councilor Garrett and Councilor Henderson couldn't be with us today, so we'll save those and get these coins to them. We'll have the mayor pro tem hold hers up. Maybe Mike can take a shot of it with the camera. We have Clerk of Superior Court, Ann Hardman. Ben, Judge Ben Richardson. And Brian Anderson, who is the president of the Chamber of Commerce. Of course, David Helmick, who we've introduced earlier. We have Elizabeth Barker with Historic Columbus. And I will refer everyone to Historic Columbus's letter and report. They did some great work for us and lays out, from a historic standpoint, some of their very strong views. So do take a look at that. They'll continue to be an important part of our discussion as we go forward. Of course, Chief Justice Gil McBride, who was here earlier, and we'll make sure we get a coin to him. We have Reverend Jimmy Elder, who presides over one of the, of course, churches, First Baptist Church of Columbus. It's in the immediate vicinity. Joy Norman, who's with Columbus State University and also represents the Mayor's Commission on Persons with Disabilities and was there to speak so knowledgeably about ADA issues. So thank you, Joy. District Attorney Julia Slater. Senior Judge Kenneth Falwell. Kristin Zahn, who brought her own expertise from a design and historic standpoint and was a citizen representative of the Historic District downtown. Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin. Pastor Medley Hayes, who also represents the church in the immediate area. Major Mike Massey. Natalia Naaman-Tummuskin, who is a citizen representative. Norman Easterbrooks with the River Center of Performing Arts, who's our next-door neighbor at the government center. Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge. Director Paul Pierce of The Springer, who's also our next-door neighbor and was on the subcommittee and was so valuable, as was Kristin Zahn and Dave Helmick. We couldn't have done it without that group crunching some numbers and looking at things as we went. Robert Anderson, who represented the Liberty District. And Ronzel Buckner, who was a citizen representative. Todd Turner, who's with Fire and EMS. Thank you for your expertise as well. Angelica Alexander with Finance. Deanna Bearden with the Sheriff's Office. Donna Newman with Engineering. And Eric can get these to them. Ed Berry, who's with the Court System. John Hutchinson, who you met earlier today. Michael Starr with 2WR. Neil Clark, who's with Heck-Birdishaw. Parker Blanton. We have with Public Works, Pat Beigler. Ryan Pruitt. Sam Andreas and Scott Allen. Maybe Michael, you can get them theirs. And Tim Jensen. Hopefully, Neil, you can deliver that for us. So again, if we could, let's give them a round of applause for their tremendous service. Thank you so very much. We're going to be respectful of your time. We've kept you a bit longer than we promised. But again, thank you for being here this morning and thank you all for hearing this important report. All right. With that, we're going to move into our economic development update and ask Russ Keriker with the Development Authority to come forward. Russ, good morning.
Good morning. I will promise to keep this as short as possible. But do let me thank a couple of people who helped me put this presentation together. First, Brian Anderson, who y'all mentioned from the chamber. Brian Celito, who is our Economic Development Executive Vice President of the Chamber. And let me thank y'all also for allowing Pam Hodge to sit in as an ex-officio member at our Development Authority. She does a great job of keeping us informed of what you guys are doing and what's going on with the city and that's a lot of help to us. So thank you, Pam. It's going right. What I want to do is a couple of things real quick. I want to give y'all an update on what we've accomplished in 2017 and then talk about some things that we're trying to do that maybe are a little bit different and that we're trying to do to improve our results ultimately. This is a snapshot, what we really focus on are jobs and capital investment. And as you can see from these numbers, and you compare them to the five-year averages, we are, we had a good year, a solid year, not an extraordinary year by anybody's standards. But we didn't quite make the numbers for a five-year average on jobs. We do have an announcement that we hope might be done before the end of the year that will probably get us there, so we're excited about that. But we did, on the capital investment side, far outpace our five-year average. And of course, as all of you, I'm sure, know, most of that is due to the Pratt &amp; Whitney announcement. These are the announcements that we did have for the year. The Heckler &amp; Koch, the Pratt &amp; Whitney, the W.C. Bradley Project Downtown and the Glistre &amp; Mary Lee. Those are, obviously, what is concerning about the committee is the number of announcements. We obviously want to have more than that and that's part of the reason we started to look at the way we're doing some things and some things we can do to improve ultimately our performance. To get into a little bit more detail, just to update you on the Pratt &amp; Whitney project, again, it was 510 new jobs, $24 million of additional salaries annually, 1,100 indirect jobs, $46 million in property taxes projected to be collected over the next 20 years and 3.25, 2.6 million in sales tax annually. That is a picture, a fairly recent picture. If you hadn't been out there, they're moving a lot of dirt, pouring a lot of concrete. And I think we'll begin to see some of those hires. I will mention, in conjunction with that project, and as we get into talking about some of the challenges we've got, we, when we did our local incentives for that project, we directed them toward a training facility that's been, that we did along with Columbus Techno College, the Techno College System of Georgia, to basically refurbish a building out in Corporate Ridge that will serve as a training facility for all things manufacturing, but initially for Pratt &amp; Whitney to facilitate these 510 jobs. That was their biggest concern in the whole process, was where are they going to get the workers? And then in addition to these 510 new workers, they've got a fairly aged workforce and their projections for the number of retirees they're going to have coming out of that facility over the next 10 years is pretty staggering. And so what we did, along, again, with the Techno College System of Georgia and Quick Start, was to refurbish that building, develop it as a really state-of-the-art training center that can be used initially for Pratt &amp; Whitney, but then we will also, as we have other opportunities, can use it for some other manufacturing clients. So what are we doing to get better? I think the first thing and maybe the most interesting thing we've done, we brought in a group of four site consultants. And again, if y'all remember, site consultants are those people who are in the business of working with large corporations who help them find locations to put their next facility. We brought in four of those people, had them spend a couple of days with us, took them around, showed them all of our assets. They did some research before they got here, like they would if they were getting ready to consider Columbus as a site for a relocation. What they told us were both some negative things and some positive things. The first negative, more time cost and uncertainty to developing real estate compared to our competitors, primarily when we were looking at this as out at Muscoview Technology Park. And we'll talk a little bit more about that on a future slide. I'll tell you what we're doing to sort of overcome that. Lack of short-term real estate options, i.e. spec buildings. And that is both those that the Development Authority has under their control, which is zero today, and what the private market has out there. There is not a lot of manufacturing facilities of size that are available. And the beauty of that is even if it's not the right building for somebody, it gets them to come down here a lot of times. And so we've discovered that, I think, we don't get quite as many visits as we used to get when we had ready, available buildings. Part of that is today's world, because it changes so frequently, used to, people would plan ahead. Today, a lot of companies don't want to look at building a new facility until they've almost got the contract in hand that's going to provide the work for that facility. And then they're wanting to do it in six months instead of 12 or 18 or 24 months, like we used to see it. So that business is getting a lot more competitive. We're looking at, we're actually getting some mixed information back as we talk to more site consultants. Some of them say, yeah, it really helps you get people there. Others say, we know the cost of doing that and so we don't necessarily recommend it, but there are some other things you can do to be more ready to answer that question. So we're working on some of that. Minimum population growth over the last five years, you know, we saw that in the Columbus 2025 report. And that is a, again, this business is about these site consultants and companies being able to look at all of your data and figure out ways to cut you from the list. And when they see a community that in population is not growing, that's one of the things that they'll look at and go, hey, it's not a happening community. Despite what we know is going on great in Columbus, that's a narrative that plays out a little bit, that they told us played out in the data that they found online to talk about us. High school graduates have limited higher education participation, failing to achieve at a higher rate. Again, we saw this in Columbus 2025 data. The need to address the workforce issues. And I will say, the Columbus 2025 Committee is making exceptional progress in this. This is both the pipeline, I think, from like eighth grade up through 12th grade to align with the needs that we're going to have. And then there's a training piece of you've got people that are already graduated from high school but don't have the necessary skills for the jobs that are open. And so we're working on both of those issues. But that is a, I think that's an issue that almost every city has some problems with. And so we're not alone in that, certainly. Crime and poverty, and let me say, first of all, let me commend the progress that we've made as a city, I think, over the last several years, where the statistics show that we've dropped in crime by up to a third in a lot of categories. That is a great story that I think we've not done a great job of telling. And so when you go out there and look at some of the data that exist, what these site consultants were saying, they're going, that's a great story to tell. The community policing stuff is a great story to tell. But we still look at these numbers that we get, that we can find online and they can cause you to be ruled out. And so that's an, that's an issue that we're going to work toward helping to resolve. And so don't want that to come across as us taking any slights at anybody that's in law enforcement. We know they're doing a heck of a job. We've got to do a better job of owning the narrative that gets told about that issue. And I think we've got some strategies to do that. And then obviously, they looked at the whole tax freeze and said, hey, that looks like it limits the ability of your community to do some of the infrastructure work that manufacturers are going to need. And that's a, that's a potential issue when we bring somebody to town to look at your, to look at your community. On the positive side of things, for most communities this size, one of the things they said, it's interesting, this size communities are typically driven primarily by government and medical. Here, it's not that case. And we all know we have that strength, that we have some very large, successful companies in town. very large, successful companies in town. They like that. The availability and cost of electrical, natural gas, and water, y'all know we've got great partners, both in what they bring to the table in product and price, but also in helping us on economic development in Georgia Power, Liberty Gas, Columbus Water Works does a great job, and those are all really positive things for us when we're talking to clients. An interesting and vital downtown, again, y'all know all these positive things. These are the things that we've been building in Columbus for the last 20 years, and they recognize all of them, and they hold them up. And I think to a person, they looked at it and said, gosh, we sort of have heard some things, but we had no idea that your downtown was as vital as this, and that the river was as cool as it is, and those are things that we can really use to sell your community. So we're looking at trying to get that narrative out there a little more as well. They did mention the affordable downtown living, the CSU, all they bring to the table, and then Fort Benning as a supplier of talent, both with trailing wives and exiting veterans, that I think that is a real asset when people are looking to try to find. Again, the biggest question for most companies looking to relocate is, can I hire the right people when I get there? And Fort Benning provides a great opportunity for us in there. We talked about the property that we have not being as readily available. What we're talking about is when we take a client out to Muscovi Technology Park today, we can't tell them exactly what it's going to cost them to move dirt if they want to put 150,000 square foot building on that location. And so what we have done is we've contracted with Barge Wagner, and they have gone through Muscovi Technology Park, through every lot on it, and developed what we're calling a playbook for every site on it, which will give you very clear expectations of how much dirt you're going to have to move, depending on what size building you want to put on there, what kind of cost is going to be if there are any water mitigation issues. And so we get much further down the road, whereas before, if we brought people in and we said, hey, we've got a 40-acre site here, and we think it's going to cost about this much and take about this long to get it ready for you to put a pad on, that was a reason for them to walk away. And it's been, we've had to spend some money to get this information, but again, the message to us was, if you don't have that information available, this business is getting much more competitive. People are getting pad-ready sites available before clients come see them, and you've got to step up your game if you want to have this as a selling point. It's a great piece of property, and, you know, we've just gotten, along with, again, the work with the city and the DOT to get this road all the way through the park, so now we have better access to all those properties. And so it was a good time to sort of relook at this whole thing. We drew some lines on the lots to avoid some mitigation issues, and we think we've got a much better piece of information to provide to potential prospects when they show up. This is another thing we're doing to make ourselves better. Our website has been a sort of a traditional website. It was not as robust as it needed to be for people looking to get good data about our city and about our workforce and about our community. And so we have recently built a Columbus, Georgia, choosecolumbusgeorgia.com, which has this, what they call Geographic Information System, which provides constantly updated, the latest and greatest data on our city, which is what people want. Most of the time, when prospects start looking for a city, we never know it, and we often get cut because they can't find the information that they want, or they find information and narratives that they don't like. So part of what this is designed to do is sort of like the playbook on the land, this is to provide data for them that will allow them to make an assessment, and hopefully a positive assessment, that then gets us into the verbal discussions and gets them down here to visit us after that. So those are things that we are currently working on. One more. The Development Authority business, I think, is changing a little bit. The whole idea of what I call well hunting, which is going out and trying to find other companies that are located elsewhere and getting them to pack up their stuff and move to your community for some incentives, that business is getting more and more competitive, and in some ways, I think, more and more old school. I think what the most aggressive Development Authorities are doing is broadening their lanes and looking at how you do economic development in other ways. That's how do you support entrepreneurism, and I think that's part of our Columbus 2025 process. But these are some of the things that we are currently working on. I'll save the first one for last. We have had a discussion on this idea of a film fund. We had meetings last week where we met with the Georgia Film Academy, we met with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the local film commission, and a lot of people from the community. The Georgia Film Academy has an idea, what they are really interested in is trying to get some of these films made with all these tax credits that the state's provided outside of Metro Atlanta. And honestly, part of what they're wanting to do is make sure they've got political support to keep those credits flowing over the years. But they are looking at, or asking us to consider putting together a film fund that will provide some local incentives that will help cover the differences in costs of producing films in Metro Atlanta versus outside of Metro Atlanta. And those are all related to some stuff down in the weeds, but it's more costly to have personnel further away from Metro Atlanta where there's not quote-unquote "a hub of workers." And so we're looking at possibly doing that. We think that could be sort of the creation of a whole new industry for our community. The Convention Hotel, y'all know we went through the Convention Hotel, had some legal issues with doing it last time. We think we've got all that cleared up, and we are getting, we're in the process of going back out now. We've been meeting with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Trade Center staff. We still think there is a real need for, if we want to fully utilize the Trade Center, we've got to have more block room availability. And so we are going back out with that proposal again, and we'll be working that process over the coming months. We've been asked to assist in City Village, and that's one of the things, I think, again, Development Authorities, how do you do economic development differently? You may have to do it on a smaller scale in some ways, and that becomes more, hopefully, sustainable. And so we are going to serve some role in helping with the City Village project, and I think that's an interesting thing for us to be involved with. The robotics at Fort Benning, we recently had conversations with both the CG and the head of infantry, the One Star and the head of infantry. There's been a lot of interesting things happening in the Army where purchasing authority has flowed sort of outside of Washington, and Fort Benning, doing all the testing for things infantry, has a huge interest in robotics. And so they've got a real excitement about the possibilities of what we could become in Columbus in the robotics world. And so we're actively working with them. We're going to be doing some things, trying to bring some events and some, hopefully contracts, and hopefully ultimately, some companies to Columbus that would fit well outside of the gates of Fort Benning, because they would be both near where the specs are being written and where the purchasing authority exists. And so we think that, along with some of the things we're doing with both education and STEM-related things and entrepreneurial stuff with STEM-related things with Columbus 2025, all that could form a perfect storm for us to really begin the creation of a, of an industry, maybe something like Huntsville is done. We think there's some opportunities there long-term. So those are some things we're trying to do to sort of improve our performance. Again, we think we've got some great staff, people doing some good day-to-day work, but the world is changing a little bit, and we've got to figure out how to change with it. And so we're actively trying to do that. Without any further questions, that would conclude my report, Mayor. Thank y'all for having us.
Right. We've got Counselor Thomas with discussion. Bruce, if you'd turn on her microphone, please.
Mr. Carricker, if you would, as you were talking, one of the things that occurred to me, as you were talking about the workforce needs, I know that the school district is very actively trying to provide some of the opportunities that our students need in order to step into the workplace. I would like to ask you and the members of the Authority to think about whether or not we might need to appoint an ex officio member from the school district. I know they have a career and technical department to meet with and sit with and talk with the Development Authority as you're looking at this piece of the issue and what the school district can help us do. I know that they are very receptive to suggestions and ideas and all of those kinds of things, but just think about it and maybe talk with your fellow Development Authority members and see if we, is that something that we need to do? I'm thinking an ex officio member, that could be a voting member, but, and let us know.
Okay, certainly. We will certainly take that under consideration. And I know a lot of that kind of work is being done with the Columbus 2025 Task Force on Education, and so we obviously wouldn't want to be too redundant, but ongoing, that could certainly make a deal wise.
I think it would be, it would be helpful, as you're having some of these kinds of discussions, not only for that person from the school district to say, hey, look, this is what we're doing right now, but for you guys to say, hey, look, this is what we need you to take a look at.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. There can't be too much, that's a huge issue, is that whole workforce area, so anything we can do to improve it is worth it.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Huff.
Good morning. Thank you for being here. My voice is leaving, so bear with me. You were speaking of unique opportunities and robotics and everything. Are there opportunities, since Fort Benning is so close to Counselor Woodson's district and my district on the south side, are there any opportunities for the south side of Columbus to be involved in maybe some of the robotics or some opportunities that you have coming up?
Absolutely. I mean, I think if we were able to get what we envision happening in the ideal situation, then the Benning Technology Park right outside the gates would be the ideal location for that. I mean, that's where we would hope to house that. And one of the things that, you know, we're, that we've discussed with the brass at Fort Benning is that a lot of these companies that do robotics are very small startup companies. They're not necessarily the Fortune 500 defense contractors. And so we may end up doing some things out there, like coworking space facilities, or something that allows smaller companies to move to Columbus from wherever they're at, and that's how the industry gets started. I don't know that it's bringing the massive companies here, but certainly that facility, the Benning Technology Park, would be the ideal landing spot for these companies. They would want to be as close to Fort Benning as possible, so absolutely.
Okay. And also, if you would, in your planning, kind of look back and see if there are other opportunities on the south side for doing some things. Because in all the presentations, it's everybody but.
Absolutely.
South side is for us, what's coming in the future.
Absolutely.
Because I think we have land, we have opportunities, it's just a matter of some planning to put some things together. Because it's.
Certainly do that.
Needing an economic boost. Okay, thank you.
I agree.
All right. We have the Mayor Proton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In addition to what Counselor Thomas talked about, Muscovi County schools, I think you also need to look at the possibility of having somebody on the committee from Columbus Tech and CSU.
We do, and Brian, you may can assist me here, but I do know that we have them as invited guests to all meetings. I don't know if we've got anybody as an ex officio, I don't believe.
See, if you had an ex officio, you might have somebody permanently.
Well, and to Russ's point earlier about, you know, trying not to duplicate services through the work of Centrica Lakes and the talented, educated people subgroup of Columbus 2025, we have a coordinated group between Columbus Tech, Phoenix City School System, Muscovi School System, Harris County School System, all of those are working together to make sure we've got career pathway discussions, make sure we've got career credential discussions. So there is a connectivity between all three of those entities, really all regional entities, to make sure we, one, know the jobs are going to be of the future, why are we not filling them, and then what's it going to take to get both existing people who are not in the workforce trained up, but also that pipeline being strong enough too. So all of that is connected. It's not where we want it, but the first goal of Columbus 2025 is to create that consortium of all those people working together and understanding each other's needs.
Okay. Because I know it's extremely important that economic development and the high schools work together.
Absolutely. Incentives used to be the number-one conversation after you got through. Do you have land, water, sewer? Now it's all about workforce. They won't even talk about land, they won't talk about incentives, so they know that you can, you can provide the workforce they need, then you get into the other things. So you're right.
Thank you.
All right. That's it. Russ, Brian, thank you so much. It's so impressive. We were talking to some consultants yesterday that were assessing our community on various things, and Columbus 2025 is a really progressive, forward-thinking way to look at economic development, addressing poverty, and we have to remember that a lot of things we talk about with workforce, with crime, relate back to poverty, and cities across the country have allowed these blighted areas to arise back in the 70s and 80s, and it's going to take, it took a long time to get there, and it's going to take a while to unravel it all, but these are the types of proactive things that do it. So thank you.
One more quick note to Counselor Huff's question about the south area. We are looking with our new website and working with your GIS staff, we're going to try to look for 50 to 100-acre areas that may need redevelopment or may just be empty, and then we can come back to you all and say that maybe there's a chance for another smaller business park, or even just an isolated parcel. That's the way you can take jobs and expansion to where people live, rather than everybody having to transport out to other areas. We are looking at that as well.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have, we've got the Mayor Proton wanting to say one more thing.
Maybe at some point in time, you may want to come to council and talk to us about 2025.
Yeah, an update on 2025.
So the public can hear it.
There will be an annual meeting in February, as the Implementation Committee finishes its work this week, actually tomorrow, Thursday, and then I'm meeting with you all one-on-one. That's the reason I'm calling you for meetings, to make sure I get your input, and then we will come, starting in 2018, we'll come to you at least quarterly or trimester to give you a regular update as to the progress that's being made.
I'm a little concerned about the public.
Well, then, we want it to be on CCG TV as well.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next, we have John Williams with the Tax Assessor's Office for an update. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. I'm the city manager. Ladies and gentlemen, counsel, this is my weekly update for appeals. As of yesterday, we had 4,700 active appeals, so that number continues to dwindle down. That's 6.7% of the taxable parcels here in the county and represents 1.4% value in dispute, which we've gone over numerous times. Of the 4,700, of course, all of them have been reviewed. 1,836 or 39% of those were recommended or are recommended for reduction in the value that we originally had on them. We've, 1,812 of those, or 38%, were recommended as no change to the value we had on them in our assessment, and that big number in the middle, 87-89, those are the notices of assessment that represent that change. So I call it a change letter. It's a 30-day letter. It's actually an additional notice of assessment. 87-189 have gone out, and almost 85% of those have time expired, meaning that 30 days had expired. So that represents 7,360 appellants or people that at one time had appealed and just were satisfied with that reduction and let that appeal expire. 1,042 appeals have been certified to the BOE, and as I've told you before, those meetings, the hearings are scheduled by the Appeal Administrator that works for the Clerk's Spirit Court. We are in the third week of BOE's. Residential started yesterday. So the first two weeks were commercial hearings. Residential started yesterday, and we've got two weeks of residential hearings scheduled. We still anticipate those BOE hearings lasting into April of 2018. For the commercial hearings we heard yesterday, I'm sorry, the last two weeks, 73 or 35% of those were no-shows. They simply did not show up for the meeting. 20% of those were rescheduled. 12% of those were withdrawn. 4% of those were actually reduced, where the BOE had reduced the value that we presented and either got close to the taxpayer's value or somewhere in between. 15 of those accepted our value, that's 7%, and then we had 22% or 47 of those were negotiated prior to the actual hearing. And again, I've said, the residential hearings started today, and 300 of those are scheduled over the next, this week and next week. We had 30 of those yesterday, and roughly, I got the numbers from my residential manager today. Of those 30, nine of them were negotiated prior to the meeting, so that was representative of reduction. We had one no-show yesterday. The remaining 20, two of those were taxpayer values. The taxpayer got their value, and the remaining 18 were some type of negotiated value between our value and the taxpayer value. So we continue with those residential hearings today, and we will the rest of the week and into next week, and then that'll be the end of our hearings for the year, and we'll pick them up in January.
Would you give those numbers again?
Yes, the 30 that were scheduled for yesterday, and there are 30. Yes. The 30 that were scheduled for yesterday, and there are 30 every day. So the 30 that were scheduled for yesterday, nine of them were negotiated prior to the hearing. So we, it's a waiver and release form is the formal document name. Uh, but it, it just represents a negotiation between our staff and the taxpayer. One of those actually did not show. And of the remaining 20, uh, two of them were the taxpayer's value. The board ruled in favor of the taxpayer's value specifically. And the other 18 were some value between our value and the taxpayer's value.
Okay.
That is my update. I'll take any questions.
We have Counselor Davis.
Mr. Williams, thank you for being here with us. Um, you've been so kind over time. Like every council meeting, you've been here and giving an update. And I'm, I just throw this out for consideration, my colleagues, uh, maybe at this point, it, it sounds like you've gotten to a point where pretty much what we see is what we're going to hear from here on out. And maybe a monthly report might be better than every council meeting. Um, you may have some thoughts on that, but I would ask my colleagues to consider that. That maybe a monthly report or would be, uh, more in line and certainly would allow you and your valuable time to serve the citizens.
Yes, sir. That's fine with me. The.
Any objection to Counselor Davis's proposal that we have monthly written reports unless, of course, a, a council can always simply email either me, since it's on my agenda, or the city manager, and ask that John appear. Is there any objection to a monthly written report? Okay. Sounds like that's the new way to proceed. And then if anybody has any questions, we know where to find you and we'll ask you to show up.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Merry Christmas to you all.
Yeah. Merry Christmas. All right. Uh, now we have the city attorney. Bruce, if you would, uh, turn on his microphone, please. We have three first readings. Mr. Fay.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate y'all's patience this morning, applicants. The first one up is, uh, property at 2591 Double Churches Road. It's going from single-family one to residential office for adult special needs facility. It's recommended for conditional approval. It's a Easter seals petition. Is the applicant here? All right. Are there any questions around the council table for the applicant?
Not at this time.
All right. Anybody else in the audience want to be heard on this petition? Okay. You don't have to make a presentation. They will vote on it at the next meeting, which won't be till about the second Tuesday in January at 9:00 AM. Thank you. Next petition, Mayor, is, um, property at 5344 Colb Avenue, going from light manufacturing to general commercial, proposed use pest control and a banquet facility. Two different buildings recommended for conditional approval. Is the petitioner here? Mr. Johnson, do you see him? Okay. Anybody present on 5344 Colb Avenue?
No, that's not the way. Remember, last time we had this discussion and I said, I said, if they're not here, then we delay it. And everybody said, oh, no, we've never heard of that before in our lives. That's not the way we've ever done it, ever since the beginning of time. Remember that, Mimi? So, I mean, we need to just come up with a system. That's all I'm saying. Cause it looks arbitrary when we delay some people's first readings and we don't delay other people's first reading. So let's pick a horse. Well, I thought you nodded and said you remember that. Oh, okay. Well, I remember it and it's on tape.
Either one is proper. So it was a pleasure of council to continue first reading or.
Okay. And, and Mr. City Attorney, I do think that we need to come up with whether or not we continue them just because people aren't here without any other stated reason, or we don't continue them. Because otherwise, I mean, somebody, these are things that are litigated, these, these zonings. And, and, uh, and somebody's going to contend they're being arbitrarily treated.
Well, we do have to give a chance for a hearing, which we've done, but that's, uh, that's all that's required.
Right. But last time, there was a, a big discussion that we, we never, now the Mayor Pro Tim does remember, but that we never, ever postponed them. Uh, and, and now we're postponing them. As I recall, we do quite frequently. So we just need to pick a horse and that needs to be the process unless there's something articulated, we do or do not regularly.
They have certainly been postponed when the petitioner is present on many occasions.
Sure.
It's perfectly okay if the petitioner is not here to delay it. So.
All right. Well, that wasn't the advice given last week. So we need to, wait, there is. There's already been a motion. I, I think he should look back. I think he should look back at the discussion last week. Maybe Mike can get that. And then we just need a recommendation from council as to what's lawful. And then I think if council needs to vote, that's fine. But you need a policy.
Either way is lawful.
Right. It's not.
Our years. We've, we've made a contentious effort to, to allow people to, you know, continue on first reading or let it go to second. And I, if I'm not mistaken, we had a long discussion about this years before. And that's when we started the policy of continuing on first reading if the applicant wasn't here.
Right.
And that's, and that's fine.
That's, that's always been the policy that I recall, but last week, nobody could remember it. So we just need to pick a horse, as I said. So look into it, make a recommendation to council, and, and then that will be their policy. And nobody can accuse us of being arbitrary. Okay?
All right. We will delay first reading until January.
Uh, do we have a second? Okay. All right. Uh, all those in favor, please state aye. Any opposed?
Okay. We'll bring that.
And Counselor Baker had a question.
Well, I mean, some of these are fairly straightforward, but some are more complex. And if the petitioner is not here and you have a question, you, you don't have any choice but to delay it.
Well, that's a grounds, that's a grounds for delay.
Right.
But my, our point is when there's no stated grounds for delay, do we have a process of automatically postponing them or not? And we've taken both sides of that situation. But certainly if there's a grounds for delaying, counselor has a question. That's, yeah.
Make sure that was not getting confused, not getting all wrapped up into one.
Right. No, this is, this is when there's no articulated grounds for delay. We're delaying some people's and we're not delaying others.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Next, uh, final zoning hearing is Mr. Boyce's petition, 2611, 2617 Warm Springs Road, going from SFR 3 to residential office, onsite parking and office use, recommended for approval. Are there any questions around the table? Anybody in the audience here want to be heard? Okay, Mr. Boyce, you don't have to make a presentation. We will vote on this item second week in January.
All right. Second week.
Nine o'clock. And that's all we have listed, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, we've had, uh, the gentleman who was on public agenda is asked to reschedule. So we will, uh, move into the city manager's agenda. If you'll turn on Mr. Hughley's microphone, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, first on my agenda, I have a bright from the start grant at $67,989. There is no match required. We're asking your approval.
All right. We've got, uh, a motion and a second. Uh, there appears to be no discussion on this matter. Bruce, if you would cue it for electronic voting. And you may record your votes. Yeah. Get busy. All right. Uh, and it does pass.
Madam Mayor and council, next, uh, I have my purchasing agenda. Have the Muskogee County Jail.
Okay. We've got a, a motion and a second to approve items A through F. Uh, those are the Muskogee County Jail Kitchen Floor refurbishment, the Fort Benning Road Streetscapes, the watershed fertilization, which is an annual contract. Uh, we have the HVAC for Cooper Creek Concessions Building, uh, the Bulk Mail Services Annual Contract, Telephone Equipment and Licensing for SIP Voice Upgrade. Um, does anybody want, uh, any of those pulled for discussion? A, please. Okay. So we'll go forward on the motion second for items B, C, D, E, and F. Um, and if you would please, Bruce, cue that for voting. And you may record your votes. And, uh, and it does pass.
Madam Mayor.
And then we've got, uh, item A, we have Counselor, um, Thomas with discussion.
If I may, Mayor, um, let me just talk about item A. And let me just recognize that we've got, um, the sheriff here, uh, our chief, uh, deputy and, um, Deputy Anthony also present with us. Um, we've had discussion about the, the jail kitchen floor. And, uh, we'll say to you that we're asking for execution of a construction contract with CT Bone, Inc. for $327,500 to refurbish the kitchen floor at the jail and expand, uh, the public defender's office. Um, we've had discussion about, um, expansion of the public defender's office. We've had, uh, discussion about the Recorder's Courts, um, restrooms and teller windows and so forth. And so as part of all of this, uh, there's an alternate number one consisting of a bathroom modification and the addition of teller windows and floor, uh, doors required to improve a payment processing for fines at Recorder's Court. Um, alternate number one exceeds the estimated contract value for the project. Um, therefore the value engineering process will be used in an attempt to lower the cost. We had that discussion, um, with you about that. And initially, we did not, we're not going to proceed with it. And then we had discussion and we told you that it was included, uh, in, uh, another construction contract bid that was going out. Um, alternate number two consists of adding five additional offices for the public defender's office by modifying the annex conference room. Uh, the work includes HVAC, electrical and communication work. And then we're also asking for approval to use additional funds from OLOS contingency in the amount of $89,045 to cover the balance of the jail kitchen floor project, uh, because, uh, that is going to, um, we're going to use the mobile kitchen longer than anticipated. So all of that is included in this, um, construction contract as we have had previous discussion about it, uh, to make sure that we included some of those things that you wanted to include, such as in Recorder's Court. So with that, I'll be happy to answer you any questions you have.
Um, thank you, Mr. City Manager. That, um, that was some of the kinds of questions that I had. I did want to ask, um, we're, we're talking about five additional offices by modifying the conference room. That, is that the, the, the meeting room or the, where?
That is not the meeting room. Let me just.
The, the large conference room on the grand floor where we often have meetings and that kind of.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. It's the large one.
And so do we have a, an alternate, um, facility if we need to have those kinds of meetings? Where, uh, just move it to another location? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, frequently, we use the community room downstairs in this building.
Okay.
Or, um, the conference, ground floor conference room at the government center, one of those.
And, and of course, you, you know, I know you're talking about that meeting room and the importance of it, but I, I just wanted to remind those listening that we added additional staff back some time ago to the public defender's office.
Right.
Based on, uh, the change in direction.
Right.
And so this is why they need, primarily why they need additional space. But to her point, question.
Wanted to also add, it will not use up the entire conference room. We'll still have the meeting space available. It just won't be as large. It'll take up maybe a quarter of that room on one end and we'll still be able to use that facility for meetings. And if they get too large, we'll use another location.
I, I know that, um, we had talked about, um, when, um, Judge Hunter and Mr. Love were here about the restroom and the teller windows and so forth. Uh, but this also is something I think that is very necessary to augment that, um, Recorder's Court, um, facilities. And as I look at this, the, um, the money, this is in the FY18 budget, special projects budget. Is that a correct statement?
For which?
Is it, is any of this coming out of OLOS?
For Recorder's Court and the public defender? No, ma'am. Only for the.
For the kitchen?
The kitchen.
Yes.
Some of that is.
Yes.
Oh, lost.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clear that up.
Sure.
Move approval.
Okay, yes. And we do have a motion and second pending for item A. So, um, if you would, Bruce, please cue that for voting. And it's ready to go if you guys would like to record your votes. Is that everybody? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor, okay. All right. We, I'm sorry. We are, we're done with that. And then Counselor Huff has a question.
Mr. City Manager, will there be a update as far as the continuation of the Fort Benning Road Streetscape? Are they going to finish that along with the Spencer High School project?
Uh, yes, we can, we can bring you an update, but you just obviously voted on the Streetscapes tonight.
I'm saying that's down to Shelby?
Uh, yes.
That's only part of it. So the rest will be coordinated going back toward the Roundabout?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I, I, you know, and, well, why don't we, you want to speak to it?
Yes. In an effort to coordinate the projects, we are going to bid that particular portion along with the Roundabout project, um, because we think the contractor's going to be working in the same area. So it would make sense for them to coordinate. And we had to have to make a change with some of the utilities. So those plans are being updated as we speak. We hope to have them any day now. So we will be going out to bid. If we don't get them out before the end of the year, the first part of the year. And so it'll be right behind it.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and I, I appreciate that question too, um, Counselor Huff, because when the Muskogee County School District project is, is complete and we do Streetscapes and Roundabout where we align Brennan Road with Fort Benning Road, um, it's going to bring, uh, a new look and it's going to be the game changer for that area. We will continue to work to clean up Brennan Road. Uh, but, um, it is, it's really going to be a remaking of that area, something that we can all be proud of.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I've got an update. While, um, I called Columbus Sports Council, Mary Sherman, uh, to the microphone, I do want to just go ahead and announce the holiday schedule for, uh, waste recycling, uh, collection. Uh, of course, we know that, um, Monday, um, December 25th is Christmas Day. Uh, and we are also closed, the government center, we're closed Christmas Day, Monday, December 25th. We are also closed Tuesday, December 26th. And so Monday's, um, garbage collection, waste collection, recycling, uh, route, um, Monday pickup will be on Wednesday, the December 27th. So Christmas Day, we will not be collecting on Monday. We will collect those who would normally get their garbage collected on Monday, the Wednesday following Christmas. Monday's pickup will slide to Wednesday. There will be no change, although the government center is closed on Tuesday, there's no change in Tuesday's pickup. The only change will be those who, um, um, always get their collection on Monday will get it on Wednesday, not Christmas Day, Wednesday following Christmas Day. I'm trying to over explain it. And then on New Year's Day, that's also on Monday, we will not pick up on Monday, New Year's Day, we will pick up on Wednesday. Wednesday is January 20, uh, January 3rd. No pickup Monday, New Year's Day. We pick up Wednesday, January 3rd. Got it? No, I'm not talking to you. I'm talking to those watching and listening.
Pages. Yeah. Okay.
And then, and then, uh, of course, regular pickup on Tuesday, January 2nd.
Okay. Great. All right.
So I'm not talking to you guys.
Okay. All right. Good. We're turning to Mary now.
Thank you so much for having us here today. Um, quickly, just going over our review again this year, we came and did a presentation. in August with Visit Columbus with Peter Bowden. We do have some members of our staff here. David Boyd, who is our event manager with the Sports Council, does a great job with us. Christina Stansberry is also here with our staff. She's an event coordinator. We have Judy Pierce, who serves on our board. We can't thank our board enough for the support that they give us. And then we have Becky Glisten. She serves as an ex officio on our board. And we do have a couple of guests with us today. Don Schumacher, who's going to come up and give a facility report for us. He is the founding person for the National Association of Sports Commission, so we're very lucky to have him here in Columbus to give us a report, as well as Al DeTola. Al is USA Softball of Georgia. He is the commissioner. And so we're going to give you some updates on what's kind of going on in softball. Just real quickly, over five years, we've brought in roughly eighty-two million dollars in estimated impact from the sporting events that are hosted here in Columbus. In FY2017, we did see a slight increase, so we're at roughly seventeen point nine million from this last fiscal year. And we did see a couple of reductions. You see two point six million in reductions and those were events that were either canceled because of weather or because they may have been rotated to other parts of the state or even country. So you see seventy percent of the hotel motel tax dollars that we received is reinvested back into our community and our return on investment is twenty-nine dollars and forty-three cent. This past fiscal year, we hosted eighty-nine events and promoted total two-hundred-and-fifty events. And some of those events could be things that we're promoting, that are happening in the community. They may not be bringing a lot of people into the city, but they are sporting events that are happening, so we try to promote those as well. You see, we have fifty-two thousand two-hundred-and-thirty-eight participants in our events and over two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand attendees. So this slide shows you the five-year history of estimated impact. There again, this past fiscal year being seventeen point nine million dollars. These are our top five venues for the sporting events that happen here in the city. You see South Commons Softball Complex is over four point nine million dollars. The Columbus Civic Center is over one point nine million dollars. A.J. McClan Memorial Stadium, over one point eight million. Woodrow Farm Soccer Complex, over two point three million. And of course, Cooper Creek Tennis Center, over one point three million dollars. The age demographics of the events that we're recruiting and bringing into the city, you see our eighteen and under sports are over forty-two percent. The collegiate events that are coming in are over twenty-five percent. Our adults are seventeen point nine seven percent and the multi-age events that bring in a wide range of different participants is thirteen point five percent. The additional events that we supported, you see the age demographics broken out there, thirty-four point eight percent for the eighteen and under and the multi-age sports, twenty-two point eight percent. So we try to focus on our youth and collegiate groups because we do realize that those are the groups that are going to bring in more family members, especially our young, younger ages. The participant room nights, and these are the people who are going to be staying in our hotels, we do not track necessarily all the spectators who come into the events, but we do question our actual athletes and where they're staying. The room nights for this past fiscal year was over thirty-two thousand room nights. Now, I would like, we've been working for several months with Don Schumacher, who I said was the founder of the National Association of Sports Commissions. He has helped communities across the country with their facilities, with the recruitment of sports. He is the go-to person in our industry. We learn a lot from him and have for several years. He's been a great friend of Columbus and we can't be more excited to introduce you to him. He's going to come up and give a report on kind of what he found when he came here for a visit over the summer and looked at some of our facilities. So, Don, I'd like to bring you up.
Thank you, Mary. Mayor, city council, city manager. Columbus has a special place in my heart. I've been in the sport travel industry since nineteen eighty-one, but hadn't done any consulting until nineteen ninety-five when the phone rang in Cincinnati and this fellow introduced himself as somebody General Caveza. And, and he thought maybe it'd be a good idea if I came to Columbus and talked with him about what happens after the Olympic Games in nineteen ninety-six. And he also told me while I was down here, you ought to do more of this. And since then, because he's a very persuasive fellow, I've worked with about two-hundred cities and when General Caveza tells you to do something, you'd best get started. So I will also tell you, as a resident of the state of Ohio, those of us that did not attend our major university get a little testy when they continually insist on being referred to as the Ohio State University. And I've said to my colleagues in the state for many, many years, if that's the case, okay, fine, but remember, the Columbus is in Georgia.
All right.
So, we did a situation analysis for your sports facilities. I was here a few months ago. We reviewed your key venues. We talked to key stakeholders involved in this very important effort that is producing the kinds of results that Mary just covered. We did some competitive research because that is, in many ways, the heart of what I've got to say to you in the next very few minutes. And then, of course, we produced a report on findings. Now, in this holiday season, I hope you will not think of me after today as the Grinch who stole Christmas. But in many respects, what I have to say to you now is, is sobering news that came, that has come as a result of twenty years of success here and perhaps not twenty years of the same level of maintenance. South Commons softball fields are badly in need of upgrades and I'm not going to go through everything. It's all covered in the report. There's no point, plus you have very dedicated city employees who know perfectly well what the real issues are at South Commons. R.G. Jones Field is deteriorating. The playing field even is not in particularly good shape and needs regrading. Golden Park has more issues than opportunities unless you end up with another minor league team that is willing to pay to bring it up to snuff. If it were me, I would remove most of the infrastructure from around the field, just have a few bleachers and maintain it as a playing field for residents and for tournaments. There are really some serious issues there. Woodruff Field Soccer Complex is very important to the Columbus Sports Council's performance every year. The fields up by the main road are in pretty good shape, but the irrigation isn't working on the fields back toward the back of the property and there are no concessions or restrooms whatsoever back there. And in a very competitive industry, sport tourism, those are not good features when you're trying to sell Woodruff Fields as a place for a soccer tournament. There's a desire to host Team USA in softball prior to the two thousand twenty Olympics in Japan. R.G. Jones is not ready for that assignment. It's just not ready. A significant amount of work needs to be done to bring it back to shape. And I'm going to show you some photographs and I'm sure after you see it, you'll understand what I mean. And the upgrades that are necessary to host a potential game between our Team USA and another competitor are needed for all the other events that take place there. It's not a single function. And more than that, your competition is much greater, much stronger, much more able now than they were back in the mid-nineties. You should though, know this, and this will be true through two thousand twenty-eight now, that Columbus, Georgia remains the only city in the United States that has ever hosted Olympic fast pitch competition. Nobody else can say that. You're the only city in the United States. So if I make comments about R.G. Jones Field that point out the need to fix it, it's because you've got a heritage that nobody else has got. And most of us are competitive and we're going to go with what brings us the most results. And you have been one of the undisputed leaders in girls' fast pitch, a sport which continues to grow. It is not a sport like softball for slow pitch that is slowly going, there's still a lot of people playing slow pitch, but it's not, it's not experiencing the decline. Fast pitch is a growth industry. But let's look at some pictures. The tank farm, by the way, is one of the most unattractive things that somebody would see coming in to see the Olympic team play softball. Now, I can, I will confess to you, and I'm very familiar with some of the things that happen with buildings in this part of the United States, that is to say, it's not uncommon to see black staining from time to time. You're going to find it on concrete, brick, and so forth because of the high humidity. But you take a look at the sidewalks, for example, they are uneven and even in some places almost unsafe now because of the roots in the trees. If there's a forester present, they, they need to close their ears because what needs to happen to those glorious trees at South Commons is they need to be pruned way back and some of them even taken out, maybe every other tree taken out. Because not only do you have these problems with the sidewalk and you see the staining and all at the ticket window, but you'll see in just a minute, grass won't grow anymore. These are pictures of R.G. Jones where you can see the condition of the fencing, the spalling of the concrete. The dugouts are very unsightly. But when you get to the bathrooms and you get to the food prep areas, you've got some real issues. And I think pictures speak for themselves. This happens to be in the official's dressing room at R.G. Jones and the, both the sanitary facility and the ceiling. The fencing for all of the fields needs attention and if you look to the photo on the right, you'll notice there's no grass in the corner of the outfield. That's caused by the density of the trees. Those field corners are in shade all year and the grass won't grow there any longer and that is part of the field of play. And at Woodruff, the first couple of pictures are the fields up by the road, they're in, they're in pretty good shape. And Woodruff has eleven fields. That's really a good number for hosting mid-sized tournaments. And this is a tremendous asset to your community and one that you really want to take good care of. But it's when you get back to the back of the property in that picture, both these pictures are toward the back, when you ask people to walk back there and it's how many hundred yards, maybe four hundred, five hundred yards back to those fields, you're walking that far away from concessions and you're walking that far away from permanent restrooms. And what's done is portlets are put back there. And again, in a competitive industry, you're now asking people to play soccer in a place where they have to use portlets over more sanitary facilities and/or take a long walk to get to concessions. These are things that some cities don't have to worry about, but you do. Couple more pictures of Woodruff Farms. We go on to Cooper Creek Tennis Center, which was named by the United States Tennis Association, one of their facilities of the year, the new part, but you have fifty-three old tennis courts there that need help. Now, the whole park needs attention, but those fifty-three tennis, you've got fifty-three and fifteen, I think. Isn't that the total? Sixty-eight courts, more or less, in one place? And Rome, Georgia made a big fuss last year about the fact that they just opened fifty? I mean, they made a big fuss nationally. You've got more courts than that. The difference is, yours are not in the same condition theirs are, but you're in a lot more pleasant place, don't tell them I said that, to conduct an event because of the rest of Columbus. Because you deliver, as I'll point out in my closing remarks, to the visitor. There's lots to see and do here. Lots to see and do. And then a couple more pictures up by the, the almost new clubhouse. There's a, there's an area there that always puddles when it rains and having the dumpsters so close to the general public can be disconcerting from time to time. But what are the competitive issues? And, and this is a, if you looked at Mary's numbers, and I know you did, I don't mean that you didn't, you, when you looked at Mary's numbers, you realized this is an economic development issue. This is not kids fooling around. This is not adults coming and drinking beer and not accomplishing anything of value. Sport tourism is an economic development issue. In nineteen ninety-five, there were very few South Commons in the southeastern United States. But today, in Georgia alone, there are fifteen other cities competing with you for events. Ground zero for the sport tourism industry is the southeastern states in the United States. You have the best climate, the best growing conditions, the most favorable conditions for competition anywhere in the United States. So this is the key area. The Midwest is second, but trails you significantly because of our weather issues. And what's happened is, you've got cities like Columbia, Tennessee, who have six outstanding fast pitch fields, and Dothan, Alabama, has fourteen. And they look like a major league baseball park, each one of them. They are in fantastic condition. Now, whether they're going to be in fantastic condition twenty years from now is another issue entirely. But part of my job is to point out that you've been a leader and in order to stay a leader, you need to address some of these issues and get them resolved because competition is out there that's very happily standing by to pick up state championship events that you might have had for a long time or events that organizations like USA Softball, who are the national governing body of the sport, have been seen to have here. In fact, we have a representative in the room, a gentleman who is the representative for the state of Georgia for USA Softball, and they're the ones that are going to decide whether the team comes here prior to the two thousand twenty games. To me, you've got a fantastic opportunity, maybe even a national television opportunity to celebrate the return of players who were here in ninety-six and the ladies who are representing the United States today and come home to Columbus, Georgia. Now, you've got the experience and the reputation, but you, you must, in our business, guard your market share. And that's what I'm here to suggest today. And that is, please listen and work with the Columbus Sports Council on needed modifications and improvements to assets that are deteriorating and certainly something that you wouldn't want to see happen over time. So substantial refurbishments are needed at South Commons, R.G. Jones, and Woodruff. Golden Park needs a team. And by the way, I don't, I, I, I hope I'm not putting my foot in my mouth here, but I'm not a proponent of minor league baseball as a driver of economic development. I don't believe minor league baseball is an economic issue. I think it's a quality of life issue. And if you have a team, it's, it's, it's wonderful, but it's for the people who live here and people from Atlanta are not going to run down and take in a game. Cooper Creek Tennis Center is outstanding, but the older courts should be refurbished. Columbus State University has done a tremendous job. The best fast pitch field, if not certainly in Columbus, Georgia, and perhaps in the state of Georgia, is on campus at Columbus State today. And in conclusion, let me tell you that a visit to Colum- And in conclusion, let me tell you that a visit to Columbus delivers for the visitor. And that's your advantage over your competition. It's fun to be here. You heard earlier someone talking about changes downtown. Well, you know that, but the visitors who come know that. And I know it too, because I've been here recently. And in fact, the last time I was here, I got a chance to see the Infantry Museum. I had never seen it before. That is a promotable feature, a fantastic opportunity for young people and their parents to gain an appreciation for what the United States Army and its infantry means to our country. Plus, it's just a knock-you-out quality experience. It's just fantastic. So, in a short period of time, what I've tried to do is indicate to you that you've been a leader, you're still a leader, you're vulnerable to your competition due to condition issues. And I'd certainly entertain any questions or comments from anyone.
Does anybody have any questions? This is, as you know, we, we do know of these needs. We were talking earlier related to
Right.
... a new building and talking about the possibility of a sploßed, and I know as long as I've been here, seven years, the staff and some others have been talking about the possibility of a sploß to refurbish these things we've already made, very large investments in. So I suspect it will be part of that conversation, if not before. So, all right, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, I think, Mr. City Manager, a while back, I'd asked for a report, and I believe that you were in the process of putting a report together, not just, I know we've got a few facilities that were mentioned today, but I think you were doing a complete update on Parks and Rec because of the concern, the exact concern that was stated today. And I think it was very appropriately put. And I contest, the gentleman that's here today, he's dead accurate. I don't, you know, look, I'm in the business and I know firsthand what hospitality means to Columbus, Georgia. Matter of fact, just want to, right up at the top in the four economic pillars that, you know, that drive the engine of this city, that's a fact. I can tell you in our business that sports tourism is major. It's major. It's what is, you know, it's, it's success and failure in our business. And I know that, I know that there's a lot of competition coming into the state now. And, you know, at one time, you know, like you said, our facilities were just absolutely phenomenal, but they've trended down now. And people have watched what we've done over the years. They've, they've seen the ability that we've been able to capitalize in the sports tour mark, sports tourism market and the economic growth that it brings into a community. And I think they've kind of learned from what we've done here, and now they're going out building brand-new, better, state-of-the-art facilities while ours are deteriorating. That's not good, because they're going to come after us, they're going to compete for our dollars that support our community and, and keep the, the wheels of small business running. And, you know, like I said, it's the difference between being successful and, and failure. And I can tell you, in our business, we all fight and compete on the weekends for business in Columbus, Georgia. That's just the way it is. Very limited corporate, but sports tourism is, is key to, to making things happen in this city. I mean, many, many times, I don't have to remind my colleagues and, and others that, you know, our city is just rocking and rolling on the weekends, which is, equates to success for everybody, which equates to the, our movement in Uptown and what we've done down there. It just provides that platform to keep the engine running. So, this is something that I see needs to be addressed soon. I don't know if you can really wait, because once somebody comes in and takes what you have now, there's probably a chance it's not coming back. That's not good for anybody. So I think we need to be on guard, if, if anything. You know, one of the things, some of these facilities, I saw the City Manager, I mean, we, we could make a difference in just the services of pressure washing and dealing with a lot of this acid rain and old stuff and all the rest of the stuff. It, it could make a, a difference in appearance just right there, and that's not, you know, very costly to, to do that. But, you know, I see our facilities day by day, once you put them in, I mean, eventually you're going to have to continue to upkeep and maintain them. We've been, all have talked about this during the budget sessions, capital replacement and, and how we balance the budgets over the last several years. And, you know, these things are not getting any, any better, newer, or shinier, they're actually continuing to go downhill. So, like the mayor said, I, you know, this is something that needs to be addressed soon, if not, you know, an issue for the next administration coming in, they're going to have to address. So, I appreciate you coming and sharing that with us. You're, like I said, you're dead accurate, you're, you're spot on. So, thank you for being here and thank you for all you've done for our community over the years, including back when you had your meetings with General Cavaiza.
All right. We have Counselor Huff.
Thank you all for being here. The Sports Council and Parks and Rec are just always so kind to me. They invite me out to many events. And I had an opportunity last year, not this year, but last year, to throw out the first pitch for the softball competition. And there were many, many people there jumping at the bit to try to get in people's ears and talk to everybody about getting these games, this tournament, to move. And there are things that we need to do. We talked about the scoreboard, we talked about the fields and things. So, if the public has not been like they should, and if Counselor has not been to see, we all need to come and see, because we have such a jewel. And when these numbers come across like they did today, you know, there's a lot of hard work to get these tournaments and get these people here. And it's been, you know, on you all's part to put a good word in for Columbus back in time, to get people interested in looking at us. And now that we have them and have their undivided attention, we need to hold on to them. At my last event, I went to, well, I had two, two events. I went to one that Parks and Rec had a, I think it was a state convention or whatever here. And our Parks and Rec Department and the Sports Council was honored that evening and well-respected by the state. And then I had the opportunity to go down to the cheerleading competition. And it's, it's amazing that the people come in from all over town, all over the state, and they're interested in Columbus. And they have explained to me in the women's softball, girl's softball, and the cheerleading competition, that the girls tend to come in and spend more money than the boys do. So, we don't want to lose any of that here. So, I'm along with Counselor Davis and the rest of the council here for us to take a look at things and see if we can't get to moving in a hurry, because from my participation and, and looking and listening at other people try to court and get in others' ears, you know, that we have a new facility, we have this, we have that, we want to move this tournament. And we need to move now so we can keep what we have and not be sitting back next year saying we wish we had. Thank you so much for what you all do.
And we have Counselor Thomas.
Two things. One is, I want to encourage the Sports Council and the Parks and Rec Department and everybody else. We need to toot our horn more than we are. There are lots of people in Columbus who have no idea what goes on at the soccer fields and at South Commons every weekend, that unless you have folks coming into town and need a hotel room and you can't get a hotel room because all the hotel rooms are taken, we don't do enough, I think, with the local media for them to know what's going on. And I don't know what the answer to that is, but I'm going to turn it over to Mary, she can, she can do that.
Yeah.
But I, I do think that we need to do whatever it takes to, to have coverage of what's going on in Columbus regularly. People say to me all the time, well, nobody uses South Commons. Excuse me? They use it all the time. And so I think we need to make sure that we're telling that story. The other thing that I would ask the City Manager and our finance folks, I think Counselor Davis is right, this is not something that we can put off until three or four years from now. We have some opportunities. I think with the infrastructure money from the OLOS, that we could, we could divert some of the money that we are currently using, OLOS money that we're currently using, to do some of the kinds of things, the infrastructure that we're talking about here. I, I mentioned something to the city attorney about the T-Sploß money. And I know T-Sploß money has to be spent on, our discretionary money, has to be spent on transportation projects. But there may be some projects that we're doing now using OLOS money that we could shift to the T-Sploß money to free up some of that. And I know that we have, we have taken a long-term look at some of that money. But maybe it's time for us to take another look and see if in 2018, 2019, we don't want to reprioritize those two accounts and come back with some of the kinds of things that we need, because if we do, we're being told that with all of the other things in Columbus, that will continue to bring money into Columbus to help to replenish some of those accounts. So, Mr. City Manager, I would, I would request that, maybe not a recommendation from your folks, but at least a look at, here's some things we could do, particularly as we're moving forward into the, into the budget process.
Okay. Madam Mayor, if I may, well, a couple of things that we are going to be bringing to you early in the new year. The first thing we're scheduled to bring you on the second Tuesday in January is a transportation update. That transportation update is going to break down the T-Sploß discretionary monies, the categories that you approved that you would want us to fund by category. And, and so, we'll, we'll talk about resurfacing, it came up at the last meeting, so I've already asked staff to prepare to bring a transportation update the second Tuesday in January that will include conversation about resurfacing and the T-Sploß discretionary monies, and then an overall transportation update. So you'll get that, and then that may be a good time to have discussion about the various categories and where you may or may not want to move money between those categories or change categories and so forth. So that's coming. And then also, we, Deputy City Manager Goodwin, over the last year, has been working on or looking at our parks and facilities, taking a comprehensive look and doing a needs assessment. That document has been finalized, and we anticipate bringing that to present to you, share with you early in the new year. The mayor mentioned other opportunities, and, and you'll find in what she is going to be bringing in that comprehensive look and looking at the needs of our parks and facilities. We'll be addressing things like the softball complex, much of what they've talked about. We'll be looking at Golden Park, we've taken a look at that, Lake Bottom, Woodrow Farm Soccer Complex, Cooper Creek Tennis Center, and so forth. And so, all of that is included, Counselor Davis, in that comprehensive look at parks and facilities. So we'll tell you exactly the condition, the situation, and what we need to get it back up to competitive standard, that we don't lose our share of the market going forward. So we look forward to making that presentation to you early in the new year. And when we talk about the infrastructure dollars that are available once we use OLOS funding and all those, all of those other categories, we don't have a whole lot left. I, I think it may be slightly more than $300,000. And when we start looking at that and we look at, and we look at the needs in the government center and other buildings, whether they be replacing roofs and so forth, that money goes very quickly. But those small things that maybe they've pointed out and that Counselor Davis and, and that you're pointing out, Counselor Thomas, that we can go, if it's pressure washing and doing some minor things, we can do those things. But also, I failed to mention, the River Walk is included in that needs assessment. I mean, our River Walk dates back to 1995. I mean, we've got benches and sculptures and erosion issues and other things that, that's included in that needs assessment. So all of those things you'll get to hear about and see and know the condition when we come back to you early in 18. And that document, Deputy City Manager Goodwin, has already finalized it, and they're doing some tweaking on it, but, but you'll, you'll get that firsthand. But the, the smaller things, I think we'll be able to handle.
Well, and I'm hoping that someone will take a look and maybe not, it might not be that they'll come back and recommend that we spend this money, but to say, here are some things that perhaps you want to think about, and so that we can make some choices about where we go with those kinds of things. I, I do know that the Finance Department and Parks and Rec, they do this on a daily basis and know much more accurately than I do. But it just seems to me that we ought to be able to take a look at that money and perhaps for 2018, redirect it, not redirect it forever. I'm not one that believes that, because we've always done it this way, we got to continue to do it this way. Maybe we can redirect it for, until we can get some of these issues cleared up. And if we can get them cleared up and get the money continue to roll in, you know, that, that gives us another, another opportunity, if you will. So I, I appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to those reports that, that you're bringing to us. I should have known you already on topic there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
And I really would like to thank Mary Sherman and the Sports Council, the Columbus Convention Visitors Bureau, and Parks and Rec. They are a true partnership and continue to work together to do great things for Columbus. So, this is an excellent report, excellent update. Thank you for what you continue to do in partnership with us.
Thank you. All right, and we have the Mayor Proton.
Nothing on you all.
Oh, okay. All right.
This is Alda Tolo. I just wanted to give him an opportunity to talk about that USA Softball Olympic Team.
Yes, I'm Alda Tolo. I'm the Commissioner of USA Softball, Georgia. When I approached the national staff this past November about bringing the Olympic team back to Columbus where Olympic softball was born, they were highly in favor of it. We're looking at the spring of 2020 as the team starts its tour across the United States on their way to Japan to put together a program where they'll play a couple of games, maybe against the college all-star team, et cetera. And of course, the fact that we want to hold it at South Commons where the Olympics was held, they're also in favor of that. So any support you can give us in, in the manner of anything you could do to better the appearance of that park would be greatly appreciated. We're not asking you for any money. We're going to raise the money to pay to bring the Olympic team here. USA Softball of Georgia will cover that. But anything else you can do to help us ensure that this is a successful event will be greatly appreciated.
Let's have a party.
I'm sorry?
Let's have a party.
That's fine with me. We, I'm, I'm all for parties. I've dealt with Mary and the Sports Council for years. USA Softball of Georgia, formerly ASA. I'm also the softball liaison with the Georgia High School Association. I remember your first pitch from several years ago.
[laughing]
I disagreed with the fact that it was called a strike, but that's okay. But anyhow, I do thank you and of course, the Georgia Sports Council for your support over the years, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Great. All right, we have Councilor Davis.
Really glad you came here today. That's exciting news, and certainly we've got an outstanding public-private partnership. And, you know, an event like that that you're describing, and I may understate it, but I just look at it as tremendous national exposure, positive national exposure to market our city. And I'm sure that maybe, Mr., or Mr. City Manager, that maybe we can even enlist some of our corporations, local corporations, to contribute to, to an event like this, because that's good news for everybody, I would think. So hopefully, we can reach out to them and, and you never know, they may want to assist us, like a company like Aflac, right, Councilor Allen?
Good. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate all you do. Appreciate the update. All right, and the Mayor Protim, if you'll turn on her mic, please. She has a comment for the City Manager.
I noticed you didn't mention Carver's Park in your naming, but I hope that we looked at Carver's Park in the report.
And she said, yes, we did. It's a comprehensive look now, I'll tell you, so.
I want my people to know.
I just named a few things.
Okay. All right, sounds good. You have anything else, Mr. City Manager?
That concludes my agenda, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great.
And the Deputy City Manager is telling me we looked at over 600 facilities.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so.
All right, we'll turn it over then to the Clerk of the Council, Ms. Washington.
Madam Mayor and members of council, on the clerk's agenda, first item is a memorandum from me regarding the River Valley Area Agency on Agent Advisory Council. We have a biographical sketch of Ms. Jane Gobar, Councilor Davis nominee for the Board of Tax Assessors. I have three resolutions to excuse counsel.
All right, we've got a motion and second for approval. All those in favor, please state aye.
And then, I have a resolution. Mr. Todd Hammonds was confirmed on last week. I have a resolution to appoint him to the Board of Tax Assessors. Need a motion for confirmation.
We've got a motion and second. All those in favor, please state aye.
I also have a letter of Mr. Robert Benson resigning from the Cooperative Extension Advisory Board.
All right, we've got a motion and second, that the letter be received with regrets. All those in favor, please state aye. All right, we've got a motion that the Board of Tax Assessor minutes be received and a second. All those in favor, please state aye.
On the Animal Control Advisory Board, we are still trying to make contact. The Public Works has contacted the president. I have also written another letter to them. Hopefully, we will hear something back from them soon. We are still waiting to hear back from Ms. Leslie Jones regarding whether or not she wants to serve again. I have written a letter to the Liberty Cultural Center, waiting to hear back from them. On the Board of Tax Assessors, I believe Mayor Protim has a nominee she wants to make.
All right, Mayor Protim?
Yes, I'm checking.
Would you turn on her mic, please? There we go.
I checked with the city attorney, I mean, make sure I could do this, but I want to nominate Mr. Matt Marfield, that position also.
Okay. Because we have another nominee, we'll bring this back at our next regular meeting for the council to vote. On the Building Authority, we are still working to...
He's eligible to serve another term.
Yes, he is, because he has not completed two full terms. He will be eligible to serve again.
And he was on the praise on that board also.
And on the Civic Center Advisory Board, Counselor Barnes is working on a replacement for Mr. Bruce Samuels, who has resigned. And then on our Community Development Advisory Council, Mr. Dale Caldwell has resigned. This is Counselor Garrett's nominee. On the Comprehensive Plan States Committee, Mr. City Manager is nominating Mr. Adrian Chester. He can be confirmed.
All right, we've got a second, a motion and a second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
And then we'll need Representative for District One, as well as District Five and Ten. We are still working with Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission to get some recommendations for District Two, as well as this at-large seat. On the Personnel Review Board, Mr. John Rowe has been renominated. He can be confirmed.
Got a motion and second? Oh, well, is there a second? I don't think I heard one. Okay, a second. All those in favor, please state aye.
On our Public Safety Advisory, Mayor, still working. Recreation Advisory Board, we're still waiting to hear back from the school district, as well as working on a replacement for Mr. Gary Bruce, who represented District Six. Counselor Henderson is working on a nominee for his District Ten seat. On our Tree Board, we're waiting to get some recommendations for, for Dr. Roger Brown and Ms. Enright's seat. On the Uptown Facade Board, the Uptown Business Association has recommended Mr. James Lewis to succeed Ms. J.C. Jenkins. She can, he can be confirmed.
We've got a motion and a second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great. Well, that concludes our meeting for today. As I said, this is our last business meeting. We've got the City Manager, who'd like to make some closing comments.
Madam Mayor, just a question about January 2nd. Mayor Proclamation meeting, it is scheduled. I just wanted to make you aware of that. And so, that is the day following the New Year's holiday, and if it's still on, then it's on. But if you were interested in not having it, you would need to make a decision today.
You don't want it.
No, not for me. I don't mind.
Does anybody have any strong feelings about whether we should cancel the January 2nd?
I don't think we should.
Should cancel it? Okay. We may not, you know, I don't know, school's back, so we may not have a lot of proclamations. Have we had a lot? We don't have any so far. We have no proclamations requested. So, that being the case, I think if there's a motion then to cancel the January 2nd, we've got a motion and a second from Counselor Woodson. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Let's get the notice out. That'll be a cancellation of our proclamation session then on, on January 2nd. So we will then see you back on January 9th, Tuesday, at 9:00 a.m. Have a very Merry Christmas. We are so glad to be part of this great community and hope you all have a wonderful holiday. And we have continued discussion, so we'll recognize Counselor Huff.
I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And since Carver High School is one of my high schools in the district, we had a nice announcement this morning that Mario Davis is the new CEO, President of the YMCA Columbus. And he's a graduate of Carver High School. Just wanted to congratulate him, wish him well. Had, didn't know I was working out with the new CEO back in July. Wanted to wish him well and everything, and just thank you all. It's been a pleasure working with all of you this year. Merry Christmas to you.
All right, great. Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you. We, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn in a second. All those in favor, please state aye. All right, we are adjourned. Merry Christmas.